To for attending. Viewers may watch TCAP's Board of Education meetings and committee meetings live on demand at any time at tcaps.mex. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a common justice for all.
Okay, with the review approval portion of the agenda, I did have one change if there is an objection to making number seven a discussion item for splits. And some funding allocations, I believe, as you wrote in. We're like some guidance on today if possible. So adding that as seven, pushing everything back, one. Any objection to that?
No.
And if not, can I have a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to public comment number one. Uh, Tammy?
I I felt uh, I know there is public honor, so I will say the board is set aside this time. And any rules addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak. It shall be limited to three words. Individuals should not make personal attacks or related actions affecting the school system. And we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detail rules and procedures, including them plain processor outlining board policy two five zero.
Jay Berger.
Well, thank you so much. It's really always a privilege to be in front of the board. And I want to start with the thank you. I'm just amazed that people volunteer to be in the roles that they are and that the administrators work as hard as they do. It's really great to have a community driven organization where people are sitting on the right side of the table trying to be right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Second thing that I wanted to say is I want to make some comments on academic standards. And as some of you may know, I have a family member that I've been coaching for quite a while. Part of the equation, but I've always just loved educators. I happen to be a financial advisor, but my principal my actual was I have just a miracle in the past. But I think let's teach you this is early eighties. So I've always found that we've been involved safer kids, safer schools. And educators just can't get enough of trying to be right. And just really always a question. I want to make a comment about the news plan, the five items that it's great. Focus for me is keep the kids safe and teach them up. Now, if you're a coach, you coach them up. If you're a teacher, you teach them up. And you want to make sure that the bars high so they. Regarding academic academic standards, I'm not an educator, so I'm just being a general professional. Take care what you're trying to retire. But here's my assumptions and what I've learned from reading. Is everyone is agreement that our academic standards are not. So that's easy. You can all, you can always say we're. Uh, and they've been really pretty stagnant. That's not a traffic situation, that's a national. If there's something going on there, then uh, what we do know too is our top kids. And then, you know, if we take the best of the best, the TCAP is there as good as anybody. You know, what we, what we do know is we have a big group of kids that's really tough to get them engaged. And people engage and our teachers need help to do, I don't know, not healthy, but it's not an easy job for all the parts. You know, they know that we've had strategic plans and most numbers haven't changed. So I think that that is frustrating, but I also think it's really the fuel you need to do something that that maybe is a little bit different. And really, my thing is you want to have goals that create a sense of urgency. We've got a great sense of urgency on school safety. I'm glad to see that's still one of the programs or one of the bullet points in there. But really these academic academic standards are really, really important. And I'll just leave you with one quote. People have been wrestling with standards for a long, long time. And quote, I'm going to give you is 550 years old. It's from Michelangelo. And he said, um, "The greater danger for most of us lies not in setting our aim too high and falling short, but in setting our aims for another mission." So really keep that in mind, please, if you think about what the right members. And again, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mary Van Valen.
My name is Mary Van Valen and I'm retired. For days.
Ms. Valen, could you speak a little bit louder?
Is is your mic on?
Yes, thank you.
That's better. Thank you.
Just have to kiss this mic to me. So I've been volunteering at Blair and Traverse Heights for the last three years. And I can tell you that experience makes me feel like I need to bring my pom poms with me and be a cheerleader for really working on narrowing that achievement gap between our kids that are comfortably economically and those who are challenged. Wow, we can do it. And I think layer elementary has certainly shown that we can raise those scores with good plans and and strong goals. So I looked just yesterday at um, the 2024 results in Traverse Heights. And of course I'm looking at math because that's my thing. And our economically disadvantaged kids are at 27 point something proficiency. That means we've got almost three quarters of our kids not proficient. So think about me shaking pom poms for you to really set goals that are bold. And all of us in this community are willing to help. And I know that kids that are away from opportunity really benefit from community projects and after school programs. And that can be life changing for them. So it's not just the academic piece, but together we can do these hard things. And I think setting goals much higher than five and 10% is so appropriate. TCAP does hard things and we do hard things well. So thank you. I appreciate all of you and the hard work you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to the consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as given?
To approve the agenda as present as modified.
We're actually on the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry. I moved to.
Withdraw that one.
I withdraw that motion. I moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, alright. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on now to the main study session and deferring to Dr. Fabi.
Okay, so uh, tonight we have uh, an outline of our strategic plan, a draft. Again, I really want to stress this is a draft with opportunity for ideas and thoughts and and knowing that there'll be things we go back to the well and thoughts and thing on after input. So what I've asked is that Jesse and Dan are going to take us through each of the goals and the thoughts that we have behind all of it. And and be able to hear what all that is. And then I'd like to go back to the first one and then just dig in from thoughts and ideas that the board has, questions, things that are missing, additions, those kind of things, so that we can go from there, so.
And I would just add, I don't like to speak as a collective group, but um, this has been a subject that every board member's reached out to me this week. So in talking to John, that was kind of my plan as well, was to have you guys just run from start to finish. Note, we won't do questions in the first run. We'll just get the full presentation, four members make notes. We'll come back to the beginning and then we go through and do questions. That way we can avoid the it's coming up, it's coming up part as well. If that works for you.
Let's just double checking. Okay, um, thank you so much for all of, all of your passion and conversations and questions and engagement. It is, it is really clear that this community has seven individuals who really want to serve our kids and really want to talk about teaching and learning, which is something that Dan and I love dearly. And so we appreciate that. So thank you. We did bring our entire curriculum instruction team with us here tonight. So Dan and I will present through the goals. Ms. Connie Taylor will take number five for us. Um, and then our team will be here to help with any clarifying questions or additional information you might need to. So I'll introduce those really quick. Our executive director of special education, Tiffany Marmavell is over there. Our director of curriculum K-12 is Ms. Brittany K. And then our whole child director is Misty Warner. She's here as well. So um, we're really hoping today to get some feedback from you guys about specifically the focus areas and our metrics that we have drafted here. We know the strategies and activities sort of will be developed more as we know what the focus areas and metrics are. And we really want to work hopefully with our staff to help us really dig in and think about what those look like. So obviously we are always open for feedback, but we're really hoping to get some feedback specifically around the focus areas and the metrics. We also want to just say upfront, this is hard work. There's a lot of complexity into teaching and learning. We are measuring human growth. We are not measuring how much money can we make and what's our profit margin on this item? That would be maybe a little cleaner and easier. I think we all realize that. But I just want to stress that humans do not grow in a linear fashion. And measuring what a child knows and is able to do by one single standardized test is never what any educator wants. We focus a lot on the process and engaging kids in the process with the hope that the outcomes occur. So I appreciate just that context. Dan and I have talked to a lot of our administrators, our building administrators about these goals. They have seen all of these and provided some feedback. We have shared these with some of our teacher leaders, knowing too, a lot of our teachers are off for the summer. And we really want to protect that time. So not all of our teacher leaders have had a chance to really dig in and give feedback. We're doing that this week with some of our curriculum leaders. We've also cross referenced with state and regional data and then looked at our best practices in educational research. One of the questions that we do have for you that we're going to put up front is whether this should be a three year or five year plan? Dan and I have have debated and gone back and forth. Our kind of our challenge with a three year is then is this year one? And hey, we've already sort of allocated all resources and set the roadmap because school starts in like three weeks, right? We onboarded all of our administrators today. We onboard our counselors, our student registration next week. You know, it's tough for us to make large pivots at this time with resource allocations and things. So something to consider. So goal one is the most popular goal, academic achievement. So a couple of things, Dan and I looked at just a mathematics and EOA. We realized there are other academic subjects that we teach. Some of our thinking around that to be, to give you some background is reading really lays the foundation for all of, all of our academic areas. We have reliable assessments on math and ELA that are given throughout the year. So we have a way to progress monitor. We have national standards in these two. We have aligned curriculum in these two all the way through K-12. And the majority of our instructional time K-12 is spent in literacy and mathematics. So we really felt like these two were the areas that we wanted to focus in on. We also heard from the board that we wanted to be mindful about keeping our goals narrow. Really that saying that when you focus on everything, you do everything and nothing, right? We've seen strategic plans like that. We've heard from our staff that trying to be narrow and like really targeted will help give them the clarity that they need to do their work. And so that's why we went with these two. Obviously, there's, I know there's been some request and discussions around the other areas too. So I will let Dan talk a little bit about how he broke down elementary targets. Does that sound good? And then I'll jump in with secondary.
Yeah, so looking at measures of success, I started with our two main achievement standards that we use here in TCAP's, right? We have NWA and we have MSEP. So kind of to take you through my thinking a little bit. When we start on our baseline data. So baseline data, let's start here as an example for math for NWA. So a couple of questions that I think we've had and maybe some notes is what group of grades do we, do we use for achievement data? So I started out here with K-5, right? Thinking the larger the cohort, the less influence that individual grades have on our data. This is one of the, obviously the biggest one I could get for elementary is a ticket K-5. We can break this data up, quite honestly, any way you'd like, right? We can do a K-2, we can do a 2-5, 3-5. Obviously, there's many combinations. I was looking for the biggest population size I could get. So those individual cohorts that come through that we see sometimes five to eight percent differences based on cohort doesn't influence this big group. Secondly, for the NWA proficiency, looking specifically here, let's say we have non-economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged and all. This is for our high and our high average students. So on NWA, if we want to do some type of comparison to MSEP, when we talk about proficiency, we take those students that are on the high and high average. Some people think that that average contingent of NWA is proficient. It is not. It's 60% and higher. So when looking at both goals, even if MWA and MSEP, I started with the idea of going back to our March study session with economically disadvantaged, how we want to close that achievement gap. And I knew that whatever goal that we set with economically disadvantaged, that idea that the all student goal would have to be less in order to close that gap. So when I started out, we did in my mind a 10% overall achievement. So when I say overall, there's been a little bit of question about this. For instance, right there at 24, 25, we're at 42.8%. I'm not talking about a 4% gain. I'm talking about 10% overall. So the goal over whatever we decide three to five years would be 52. Okay? And then the idea that that would then change, you're going to get a little bit of bump in all of your kids anyway. We figured out it's about 3%, right? If you bring up your economically disadvantaged 10, your full group of kids are automatically going to go up three because they're part of that population. So we obviously wanted to show growth there also, and that's why we went with five. So it's the idea that if we decide to change and move up to a more rigorous standard, right? Let's say we want overall, all of our kids to achieve 10. That means if we want to close that achievement gap, we have to then proportionally increase our economically disadvantaged and how much we want them to grow. So we'd have to move them up. If we want 10% overall, we move our economically disadvantaged, we're getting close to 15%. You know, as far as proficiency goes. Another thing with NWEA we had, and again, I went with NWA because NWA is that, that rubber hits the road assessment. We see internally, teachers use it on a regular basis throughout the year, drives instruction. While that MSEP is more that outward facing, we use some of that, obviously some of that data for MSEP. We make decisions about curriculum. But as far as when that data comes, we all know this, the data has still hasn't been released from the spring. And when we look at that data, we can look at like grade level building trends. But actually making decisions about students, those students are no longer in front of teachers. So the really nice thing about NWA, and I covered a little bit of this when we talked about our board curriculum in July, is that we can take this report, this happens to be a JK2, right? And we just talked about how proficiency is that high and high average band. So you take the blue and the green and you combine it and that's your proficiency. But you can take this report and drill it all the way down to a teacher level. Which means that when we talk about strategic planning, right? We want this to be alive in a building. We want it to be referenced in a building. Then a teacher can actually take our goal as far as moving students from those lower three bands into the upper bands and do it on a classroom by classroom basis, which is, you know, somewhat powerful. We talked about strategic planning in the past. It's nice to have a goal that's achievable, that you have every classroom, you know, in elementary buy into. And we can talk about as part of their PLC process. So conversely, not conversely, but the other baseline data we looked at with MSEP. And those MSEP goals, same idea where we have our economically and our, our all categories and the idea of the economically disadvantaged, bringing them up from 30 to 40%, which would then raise overall automatically to 47, but our goal would be up to 50%. So just kind of my thinking behind where these numbers came from. My ELA and my math are the same as far as that 10 to 5 ratio. The idea of the MSEP being the more district as far as curriculum team and NWA really getting into the classrooms. So they're aware of the goal and they use it on a, on a, on a basis that's, you know, fall winter and spring.
Okay, you want to talk about secondary?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. So. Alright, so we, so for secondary, for unlike elementary, so this is a little bit different. Instead of combining a whole bunch of grade levels together, we specifically set goals around eighth grade and 11th grade. And here was the thinking behind that. For secondary, we don't have a consistent assessment that you can combine like NWEA that we have in the elementary, right? In our middle school, our state assessment is MSEP. MSEP, that's sixth and seventh, and eighth grade it's PSAT, which is given now, starting this next school year, fall, spring. Ninth grade is PSAT, 10th grade is PSAT 10, not the same version as the other two. And 11th graders take the national merit qualifier followed by the SAT. Every version of that, depending on the student's grade level, the test gets longer and the benchmarks change. And so it's really hard to sort of like aggregate it together because it would be like me putting a bunch of data together that doesn't really match, which I could do, but like statistically gives me the heebie jeebies. So when I talked to the secondary principals about this, they really felt like eighth grade is that clutch transition year for students in ensuring that's when they start that suite of assessments by college board. And really, this is the one that kids, they, they, they just take more, they take it more seriously. They feel like they're skin in the game. They get college board accounts. They can see their accounts. They can see what strands they didn't do well in. Teachers have more ability to do, to do some instructional planning around it, to do goal setting with kids. They really felt like this versus MSEP, because it was only given in the sixth and seventh grade was our one to go with. So we did that for the 11th and the, sorry, eighth grade and 11th grade years. Like Dan, I sort of listened to what you guys were talking about. There's a ton of subgroups we could divide students into, right? You could probably think of lots of subgroups. But we focused on the economically disadvantaged as well. Now, because we're talking about a cohort over time, I said this before, I have a hard time statistically saying it's going to be a 2% increase over time. And I was trying to show you the five year to kind of get at this idea of there's variability in cohorts over time. There will be. We're humans. They're not the same. There's no way for me to standardize it. And there's no way for me to say because we went up from spring of 21 to 22 on that eighth grade. Wow, look at that. Did we do something different? I don't know until I see enough of it to say the trend line has moved up and we've like systematically changed the outcome for kids because there's variability in cohorts. That's my stats soapbox. But so what our goals were then is to kind of follow that five year or three year trend. We did have a different goal target for ELA and math, both 11th and eighth grade. And that was built off of, we looked at a lot of schools that were similar around the state and how they were performing and what we actually felt like was challenging, but yet achievable. So for ELA, for eighth grade, we really would love all students to be performing at 85%. As you can see, the last five years there, we haven't been anywhere close to that. But we think student manager and I have been talking a lot about how we can be more targeted and engage more kids. And then that economically disadvantaged and non, that I added that yesterday in case you were like, what is this slide? I added this to the baseline yesterday because you guys asked to see those two. We don't normally group out the non economically disadvantaged. So I was like, that's an interesting way for me to pull the data and recode it. But that shows you the gap there. And so if you look at that for ELA, in both eighth and 11th grade, it's not quite as large as it is for math. And I'll talk about that in a second. But we'd like to get that gap less than 10% in both our eighth grade class and our 11th grade class. Right now, we kind of hover between low twenties for the eighth grade. I think the 11th grade are pretty close around there too. And so those are sort of the goals with that. And then for math, so 85% for eighth grade and then the 11th grade for ELA was, was sorry, 85% for middle school and 80% for the high school. Our high school, although the scores are similar with the ELA, they just felt like at that time it was going to be a really big reach to get to 85%. We had a very lively discussion about how the middle school's goals were higher than the high schools. But they just felt for where kids were at, if we can score consistently 80% of our juniors reaching college ready benchmarks in English, that would be like pretty outstanding for our district when you look across the state and when you look across the nation. I think 85% is a great reach for middle school. So for math, okay, again, math scores traditionally are lower and we always wonder why. It's not because our kids, math is a little harder abstractly, but remember the benchmarks are higher. They're higher for everything in math with SAT. You have to get more questions correct to score at the benchmark than you do in English. Lots of reasons why, but just keep that in mind when you look at the data. We have struggled, especially at middle school in math. That 38% is a really big concern. When I saw that, I texted Dr. Van Wagner right away about it. I double checked it about eight times. We think we know why. There was a curricular piece of it. We really feel like we've already put things in motion. Brittany K and I have talked about developing, we've developed a tier two intervention program for our sixth graders. We really want to go after that. But we set as our goal of 55%. And I know that number seems not great, but right now we're scoring 36% or 38%. 36, thanks. So we felt like 55% increase would be a really ambitious target. And then for our juniors, we set 60% as the target. It's interesting, I feel, when I took over at Central, that was kind of my math department target for those guys, 60%. We never hit it. And we always kind of laugh, but I really wanted to be able to say that we know the majority of our kids can reach that college readiness at high school in math. The span between our economically disadvantaged versus non for math is bigger. It's bigger. If you look at that gap, then it's closer to 30% difference between those years. When math is inaccessible for a child, they just are done. They're done. They struggle to engage. It is harder to dial down the math and get the kids involved in that skill development than it is in an ELA class. You talk to our special ed teachers who co teach a path, they will tell you when the kid has no skills, they just do not engage at all. And that with reading, they can kind of convince the kid, use interest, those types of things. So we're really going to have to go after how we're going to engage these kids in some pretty rigorous mathematics. in some pretty rigorous mathematics, which we have some ideas around. Those are my goals for math.
So just to point out there, right, Jesse and I, we took a couple of different approaches and obviously suggestions and feedback about that at the end is if you want to see that percentage growth at the end of five years? Or do you want to target, where Jesse Edmore did that eighth and 11th grade, that target percentage we want to reach? It was just a couple of different ways to do it. We decided to do a couple of different ways. So any feedback on that, of course, is appreciated. So moving on, goal two, student wellbeing and connectedness. We broke this up into two separate focus areas, one on culture, one on safety and security. So we decided when we looked at culture.
One on the back too.
And the connectedness and mental health services. So the culture one we broke up, we included our attendance. We talked in board curriculum about chronic absenteeism. We also looked at LEAP and participation. And then our third one there was a similar connection to LEAP as far as our extracurricular clubs. And then we moved on, secure, uh, security and safety. This is one of the parts in the strategic plan where we talk about a goal of 100%. Report that they feel safe at school. We do a yearly survey with that exact question. Do you feel safe at school? Right now, our baseline 91%. 100% of our schools complete safety drills and learn to grow practices. I know that Patrick McManus runs up, heads up our security and heads up our drills at our schools. He's been really creative the last few years, especially with our lockdown drills, creating more of a, kind of a culture of learning for those kids where he brings them together, he talks about why we're doing the drill. It's more than just alarm goes off and everybody hides, which has been really beneficial. We got a ton of positive feedback about it. And then lastly is mental health professional to student kind of ratio. Right now, we're looking at maintaining access to mental health experts in schools, building right now, our baseline data is 272 to one. So we're looking to grow that. Obviously, the board, Dr. Van Wagner, we've had a ton of support. I've talked about it in board curriculum quite a few times. We have our counselors at the high school and our secondary level. And now we have a full-time, at least a full-time social work at all of our elementary schools.
Yeah, and I'll just touch on a few things from goal two. So you might be wondering, why is the baseline data different for this one than it was for student academic achievement? You know, like it or not, one nice thing about having standardized tests is it produces very standardized data for us for lots of years. We developed a student survey, oh gosh, like about five years ago. We developed it at the secondary. We really looked at national surveys and best practices. It's, it's not long, we do it internally. We standardized it at West and Central, then we standardized it at the middle schools and the elementaries picked it up. Then it kind of floated off of our existence and we didn't do it consistently. Last year, Dan and I made sure it was administered pretty consistently. We do it twice a year. We had times in the year that makes sense for kids to give us feedback that we can adjust. It is pretty much, the student survey is owned by the building leadership team. They are looking for what are the kids saying about their school? And how can they, as the staff there, work to improve it? So we have only one year's worth of data there for you as the baseline because we don't have consistent five years' worth of data on that. Thinking if these metrics are something that you think could measure these focus areas, we would have to make sure that those surveys are given on a regular, consistent basis to be able to monitor that and see where we're at. The baseline data for the student activities was a little bit one that we had to be creative about, how do we figure that out? I literally had to do a dump out of Power School, remove duplicate names and try to figure out how many kids are an athlete. It was, it was a lot of data mining to even get to that 61%. Again, if this is a metric that you as a board say this is helpful, we want to know what percentage of our secondary students are involved in this, then we'll work with our technology department to develop a system to track those kids so that we're able to do that every single year for you and report on that.
Yeah, and the LEAP number I came up with, 3707 is a combination of our sports for our elementary and middle school. They, there's a lot of different activities that run through LEAP that are included in these overall numbers as far as baseline goes. For instance, there's our youth football program. They pay a registration, we register the youth football program from around the whole area. A lot of those kids may not be TCAP's kids. So when we focused on that baseline data, you see that the total here is around 6,000. But when I focus as far as where the goal should come in at, as far as a, the increase of 20%, again, that would start with the combining these two numbers at around 37.
We did use as our advisor what our enrollment account was. Dan and I had to at least like sort of figure out where are we getting some of these from. So just, just an FYI. And then the last thing I want to say is that 272 to one FTE. You might be thinking, wow, that's what our high school counselors have on their caseload? No, it's not. What we did was we added up all the FTEs that we currently have in the buildings that would fall under the umbrella of counselor or social worker and divided by our entire student enrollment. And that's what the ratio is. That does not mean that our counselors have a max caseload of 272. There are some of our social workers who don't see as many kids because the behaviors they support are much more intensive. And so they operate with a lower caseload. And then we have some counselors who are very much tier one and they have a much higher. So that's just the FTE total and divided by the total enrollment of students.
Which is true for social work in our elementary schools or our title buildings. Traverse Heights and Blair have, Traverse Heights currently, next year, it's 1.8 FTE. And Blair's at a 2.0, Central grades at a 1.8. So those title buildings are giving more allocation as far as that mental health. Okay, goal three, we talked about positive student behavior. So this particular one, again, coming off fresh from board curriculum, some of the data that we used, we kind of broke this up into some of our proactive approaches we used before date, before our behavior happens. And we look at specifically some student surveys results as far as feeling respected by their peers, right? Where we look at that bullying idea or that idea that they get along with their peers and inform those and make those important friendships. And the next one, that their peers treat teachers with respect. Another point there, right now, baseline data, 65% for the second one and then 74% as far as feeling respected by their peers. A lot of strategies here obviously go into our tier-one social, emotional, instruction, tier-one support, SEL curriculum. The second one is more of, addresses what happens after the behavior occurs as far as data around our suspensions that we presented at board curriculum and how we'd like to get those, that number of 85% of student suspensions occur one time with a student, baseline is right now 72. So we understand that if we have a student being suspended time and time and time again, obviously, it's not an appropriate intervention. And we should be using other interventions, mental health support, trauma-informed practices to help that student with that behavior.
Yeah, this one, Dan and I really, we, we struggled and we challenged each other on what are the metrics, right? We don't want to do like the number of suspensions because that could change depending on our enrollment. We didn't want to do the length. And so we really, we, we thought that that representative of like, what, what are the percentage of students who have been suspended? That only that happens one time. And that incident, which involves the restorative, which involves a reentry, change the behavior for that student moving forward? That's what we're always hoping for. So we thought that was a good data point for that. The other piece is like when you look at the restoratives and you're like, gosh, 85%? Why not 100%? Not every situation will call for a restorative reaction meeting, right? It just won't. Like there might be a situation in which a student vandalizes something or damages property and it, I mean, that typically you don't do a restorative meeting with that. So like not every time in which we have a discipline does that, does restorative make the most sense? But we do think we can increase that practice there. And then the other thing about the positive behavior is we really, we were really thought hard about how would we measure this? How would we measure that our students are treating each other and treating community members with more respect? Our student survey has three questions that addresses this. It asks one about how do peers treat you? It asks one about how do you see peers treat teachers? And then it asks one about how do you see teachers treat students? And I'll tell you what, our kids say that our teachers treat our students very, very well. They actually say so-and-so's too patient with kids. And we have, especially at the secondary, struggled more with how they see their peers treating our staff and how they see their peers treating other peers. So we felt like those would be better benchmarks and data to go after. This is the best presentation, Dan, and just keep rolling.
I know, I know.
Okay, goal four, post-secondary readiness. All right, so I worked with Mr. Esper and Mr. Berger on this. And then obviously, Mr. Gwinney kind of weighed in at the last month's hour on this. So we broke this into two thinkings here. We really thought about graduation. So what are we doing in school to support our students to be successful? So like how about that on-time graduation rate? That's something we have a lot of hard data around and some baseline data, really looking at increasing that. So we would love to see 90% of our students graduate on time, right? Again, looking at that five-year trend of where we are. And then right now, we're sitting at 67% of our economically disadvantaged students. So again, we broke that into a subpopulation and we would really like to see 80% of our economically disadvantaged students graduate on time. And we'll tell you, we got really exciting news this weekend. I don't remember when I texted you, yeah, Friday. I was on vacation, but reading all my memos from the state. We got flagged from the state because we had a graduation data point they want us to look at. It was for Traverse City High School and it was because the graduation rate went up by so much. They were over 40% this year at Traverse City High School. And that is a testament to Mr. Joe and his staff and how hard they're working. But like that's what we want to see and we want to see those strides. So it was a good flag in that way. The other piece that we've seen a lot of high schools around the state track this is this idea of graduation plus. That's the second bullet point under that first focus area. So graduation plus means, in a kind of a nutshell, it means the student graduated on time and had some type of post-secondary experience during their high school career. Joe, Esper and I, back when I was the central principal, talked a lot about this. How would we measure this and what would that look like? Because we thought that was really important, that not only our kids reached that graduation diploma, but also engage in some type of post-secondary experience. Typically, that's just defined as AP coursework, so some type of course in that, dual enrollment, not necessarily passing AP, but just having that full exposure. Dual enrollment, a CTE certification, so all of our students who go up to the Career Tech Center, all those programs, almost all have some type of certification that they can transfer right to a job, work experience or a career internship during their high school year. So this last year, I only grabbed one batch of transcripts. Again, that 62% was kind of labor-intensive to get, don't ask the details, is where we were with this last class. I could go farther back and see kind of more data if you wanted us to, if we'd like this as a, as a metric for this. But we would love to see three-quarters of our students graduate on time with a post-secondary experience. I, I could see us increasing that metric too. Of course, my friend, Mr. Berger, wants it to be 125%. So, and then the second one really is, so now they've graduated, they've had that experience. Hopefully, they've, they've had that post-secondary. But do they have a plan and do they feel ready for life after high school? So all of our students are required by the state to create what's called an EDP, which is educational plan, starts in middle school. We kind of look through those, myself and the secondary principals, and about 88% of them are current and accurate. We think we can do a better job of that. You see, we put 100% for that one. I think I've got some new lead counselors that are really geeked up about this post-secondary readiness and they've got a lot of great ideas. And then that other 82% baseline came from, again, we asked on our graduating seniors, do you have a plan for life after high school? And right now, we have about 82% of those last class saying, yes, I feel ready for that next step. And we would like that to be 95%.
Okay, Connie. All right. So in terms of staffing, high-quality staffing, we focus on three areas, the recruit, retain and to grow and develop. So under the first area of recruitment, really focusing in on what's the new hire experience? How was their application process? What do they think about the interview process, the onboarding process? And looking at ways that we can improve in all of those areas? Then looking at where's our hiring managers, where's their satisfaction? In terms of not only the quality of the applicant pool, but the smoothness of the process. We've already made some pivots from based on the last strategic plan goal. We intend to continue doing that as well. And then lastly, sourcing. We do a general posting, which through the, the software that we use, launches it out to not only our website, school websites, LinkedIn, all the major hiring components. But those are general. And so one of the areas that we want to improve is to expand by 10% where we're putting out these job postings. Tends to be a little bit problematic because advertising is extraordinarily expensive. But looking at places like if job-specific, so if I have an AFSC position that's for mechanics, reaching out to those types of organizations that, you know, produce and generate and, and focus on the trades areas, for example. So really trying to be more focused, not just in general terms, but in broader terms to reach out and be more specific in terms of where, where we're doing our marketing and advertising initiatives. So what, again, we're working on increasing our student teaching pipeline. We tend to hire almost all of our student teachers. So the more teachers that we can get to host and, and serve as teacher mentors for our student teachers, the better applicant pool we have. And it's on the job training. We can see how they're doing in the classroom. We have an experience with them, they're a known entity. So again, they probably served as our largest target area when we're doing hires every year. And I already mentioned the, the strategic advertising and marketing and candidate experience and supervisor experience. We have not collected data on that previously. And in GoToLea, we beat, we go out, we do touch bases with all of our folks, which I'll get more into when we talk about retention. But we're not doing a survey. So what someone might be willing to disclose in a survey setting that's anonymous versus what people will say when we're meeting with them, could be entirely different. So following this hiring season, start of next school year, we'll be launching a survey to our hiring managers and our new hires just to see how their, their process went. Moving on to the focus area on retention, we're looking at new hire turnover rates. We have fantastic, well, we have really fantastic non-turnover rates as it relates to our teaching staff. It's about 2.4%, which is significantly less than the state average. Where we're really struggling is in our support groups. So between TC CAPSA, AFSCME, TCAA and our non-affiliated childcare, we see somewhere, anywhere between 30 and 36% turnover after the first year. So much of that is based on, you know, wages in the competitive market. But we want to make sure that we're getting out there and getting a sense for why they, why they might be leaving. So if there's things that are really within our control, but that, you know, as a public institution with limited dollars, it's really hard for us to compete with the private sector. So if that's why they're leaving, we will always continue to look at our salary structures and where we can entice folks financially to stay with the district. But if there are other reasons, if they feel they're disconnected, so on and so forth, those are definitely things that we're going to be able to target. And as I said, the baseline, the average for the support groups is 32%. Again, we've got some climate surveys. So we're looking at like what people who feel like they have a sense of belonging in their school, they feel that they collaborate effectively and that they're getting really in real time constructive feedback on their work. And so some of the areas that we're looking at, the strategies, is expanding our stay interviews. For our new hires right now, we really focused in on teachers. And when they come, we meet with them, you know, through touch points throughout the school year. You know, how are things going? What do you now know that you wish you'd known when you were hired? At the end of the school year, is there ways that we can improve the new hire process for people? We're not currently doing that much engagement with our support staff. So that's definitely an area where we can do that. My team touches base with them, you know, 45 days and at the conclusion of a probationary period. But beyond that, we're not doing the extensive stay interviews with that group. So that's one of the areas that we're going to look at. Also starting to look at and encourage more participation in our exit interviews. Right now, they're, you know, we send those out. Not all staff, in fact, a really low percentage of people will actually complete them. And those tend to be people who had either a really great experience or a really bad experience. What we really want to hear is from that middle group, that you're leaving, why is that the case? We're doing, looking at a 360-degree feedback on our managerial support. Are they feeling supported and growing? And then continuing with our recognitions and incentives. So the longevity bonuses, the FIDAR bonuses, all of those sorts of things. And then lastly, focus area of grow and develop. We have been working on some career pathways that we want to roll out to staff. We have our tuition reimbursement for multiple groups to allow them to see this is what it would take to move from, for example, an aid position into a teaching role. This is what would be required of you and what does that look like? And then trying to develop those in all of our areas. So if someone is starting at safer custodial position, but they have aspirations to go into the skilled trades, how might we support that and help to align that pathway for them? And even outside of their own groups. So, you know, I may have a bus driver who says, I'd love to be a teaching assistant. What does that look like? Or a bus driver who says, hey, I'm now to be around kids. Or a bus driver who says, hey, I'm now being around kids, I wanna be a teacher. What does that look like? And also succession planning for our leadership roles. I think this is one of the areas that we've done a really great job at. If you look at the hires for our recent leadership positions, they've all been internal. And it's intentional that we have everyone go through the interview process so that we are clear that our internals are in fact stronger than the external candidate pool, and that has really been the case. Um so this isn't just an automatic, we place our internal staff into the leadership roles. But we wanna more like develop a succinct and defined succession planning um so that folks understand what they would need to do to grow into one of those roles. Um again, the value-added evaluation. Uh I think Jesse, you were sharing with me some data that talked about the more folks are observed and the more feedback they get, the closer connection they have with administration and the more supported they feel by the organization. And so one would think that that would be quite the contrary, like, you know, but for the most part, so long as we're providing that constructive and ongoing in real-time feedback. Um I think that we need to make sure that that's happening across all of our units. And then supervisor mentorship and coaching programs. Again, we do have a mentorship program, but making that more refined. Using technology and digital learning, understanding that it's really difficult sometimes for folks to go into in-person training opportunities. So what might we make available from your own home, the comfort of your couch, uh in the evening that staff can go and do and grow? Not only from a mandatory training component, but also voluntary training component. Again, personalized learning pathways and peer-to-peer learning mentorships to help individuals grow.
Okay. So that that completes the presentation portion, correct? So I think and I definitely would take any any guidance if anyone feels we're going off track. But what the reason I wanted to do that was to A, get allow everyone to line up their thoughts. But then B is to pick out first the overarching questions about the strategic plan in general rather than the specifics. I believe the main one in there was the length of the plan. Which again, doesn't have anything to do with what's in the plan, just the length of the plan. We have typically operated, typically operated on a three-year cycle. Um I think that was based off what other districts have done and we didn't have a plan at all and we that's what we needed to get the the round done. I do agree that when we're doing this planning, we're pretty much locked for this year. So we're talking about a two-year plan of which one year we're gonna be talking about the new plan. So we're talking about one and a half year plan. I think the downside to a five-year plan is one board member, one and a half maybe, I don't know how we count you, but um we board turnover is actually pretty low for on in our district. But yet, we've only still got one board member, one or two board members who have been with us for five years, so. I wanna, I don't wanna put in, ever put in a plan that is gonna get dramatically ripped apart in a couple of years, um cause that's not good for anyone. So I don't know what other board members feel.
Well, I would just add too that um whatever we choose, three years or five years, I would advocate that the
Or four.
Or four, that might be the sweet spot in the middle, right? Uh that the measures for success um line up with the plan. So, you know, it's not three with five-year goals or, you know.
I do feel like it's difficult to
Yeah. Um but the other thing I wanna point out is in addition to none of us, I, well, one, one of the seven of us has been here for five years. Two more have been here for four and a half. Three have been added recently, um and Beth is somewhere in the middle. But there have been the the, you know, the circumstances of COVID and you know, like, I don't think anybody predicts another pandemic, but you just never know. And then we did put a ton into health and we put a ton into safety and security. And our circumstances as a district have changed dramatically, just in the three years of the the plan we just completed. So I just feel like five years is a long stretch of time, um you know, to recheck our priorities.
I I do agree that five, but any, what's other people's thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, I mean, I'm excited about this draft plan. I think it aligns with our mission, our vision, our values, including our commitment to equitable access and success for all. Um I also think it reflects with our Board of Education standards of practice, that we've all committed to the moral and ethical imperative to serve all kids. I like that it builds upon the previous plan, um including the portrait of a graduate, which didn't get brought up, but I think it does align with that. And it didn't, it did include the twenty twenty-four educational equity uh listening tour data, which was also great. And uh of course, I really value that uh for the first time that I'm aware of, that we're actually setting targets for economically disadvantaged kids. So I very, very much appreciate that. Again, nearly forty percent or nearly thirty-four hundred of our kids come from low-income families, so I do appreciate that. I I do support a five-year plan. Uh I think um uh I love the five-year trends and I would support a five-year goal. I also appreciate going from twelve focus areas uh to five focus areas. Uh but I will point out that now we have thirty-four separate goals uh and measures of success. So I would um challenge us to try to get that under ten with one to two goals per focus area. Um so that Jesse said, we can have more clarity and focus uh around um those goals.
And that was actually more, I was gonna move to next with level of goals, but just figuring out the timeframe first, any thoughts on?
I could just real quick chime in a little on NWA, just logistically, they're resetting norms. So our, right now, all of our data has been based on a twenty-twenty norms. They're gonna move to twenty-twenty-five in the fall. So I wouldn't necessarily be using our spring data from twenty-twenty-four, sorry, from twenty-twenty-five in this plan. It'd be best to use spring data from twenty-twenty-six. Uh cause that could be a significant difference. It has nothing to do with strategies or students. It's just merely re-norming the data. So every five years, NWA re-norms the data. Um I honestly think it's gonna be in our advantage, or our data's gonna automatically go up, but I wouldn't want it to be just because of the test. So something to keep in mind, we're talking three to five, using our spring twenty-twenty-five for NWA is probably not best practice.
I don't have a particular preference whether it's three or five years when the sun sets. What I do think is critical is that we have annual evaluations of those goals and have some means of doing whether we're making progress towards that final three-year plan, that five-year plan. So I'm less concerned about when it sunsets and much more concerned about having more frequent data to know that we're on track. And it it almost becomes like a dashboard concept, so that we we're held accountable al- almost on a monthly basis and annual basis. I I don't care how we do it. I just need shorter intervals to know whether we're progressing the way we're supposed to. So three years, five years, I I can live with either one to sunset it. I just need to know annually whether we're making progress.
I mean, I know you guys are looking for us for some guidance here, but I would just turn it back around. Like, you're the ones that know the data and how to measure the data and have proposed the goals on the data. What, in your opinion, is a three-year or a five-year?
Well, my first thought is just going by what I just mentioned about NWA, that's apps a year right off the get-go. Uh and then the re-looking at what the next um strategic plan, right, we start that a year in advance. So that's why when we made our goals, we made them as a five-year. Uh maybe because we've been part of the system for so long, right? These years seem to fly by and and a five-year seemed doable. And just speaking of what Scott said, you know, the idea of building that dashboard just hats off to Sophie and our and our tech department, cause that's what we're having her do, right? So every goal that we have, she's starting to build in our our power school system or student management, the idea that we can easily pull this data on a regular basis, right? If we do the NWA goal, you know, teachers are pulling that fo- three times a year. Uh but as far as big data goes, it it can be a to-do, as Jesse has mentioned, bringing in spreadsheets and pivot tables, all those types of things. With her building that dashboard, we can report out on a board curriculum as regularly as as the data's available.
Yeah, I I guess my my hesitation with the three-year plan is is a little bit what I already stated. Like, things are already kind of in motion as far as we set the stage for the school year. Um now, I do think that a plan like this provides clarity, which we all know when we have clarity, we tend to do a better job at reaching a target. I'm not sure if just the clarity in this first year is is gonna be enough. I I foresee if we really are gonna be as ambitious as we are with student achievement, um that Dan and I are gonna come to Dr. Van Wagner and say, hey, we need like a consistent, regular tier-two math support across every of our eleven elementary schools. Hey, we don't have that right now. That takes funding and people, right? And like, we can't change that at this moment for the next three weeks, but we can figure out what it is it would look like and start thinking about what that system, so we have a better idea as to what that task is potentially. Um so I guess that's sort of my thought about, I I really love these, like, this idea of doing student achievement and measuring it over the long haul. But I agree, Scott, like, and we gotta make sure we have checkpoints along the way, that we all hold ourselves accountable and we hold that mirror up and say, we committed to this, where are we at in this six months? Where are we at after a year? Where are we, you know, like, coming back to that would be really important.
I mean, I would just add that I'm, I don't know how to break the cycle of we do a plan and the last six months of the plan is the wind down, like the overlap. And we have the wind out, which we can't do anything. Uh I almost think it's a five-year cycle with a four-year plan. Um and then there's, there is a dedicated planning process in between the two, because we've been doing this for several months and no one's paying attention to the old plan and we don't have a new plan. I mean, that's really in practice what we're doing is is my li- line of thought, but again, I'm one, that's kind of why I throw out the four-year, so.
Well, if we can set some academic goals and we hit those on a regular basis, I don't care if we ever do another strategic plan.
Exactly.
I think that's the other part, you modify.
And that's part of the inherent risk in public education in general, is there's always some new curriculum, there's some new way of teaching and so we throw everything out and we start over again. We're not afforded the luxury of starting over. I mean, we better have the target and make sure that we have the tools in place. And Jesse, you're absolutely right. If we're gonna ask and demand for excellence, then you have to tell us what you need in order to reach that goal. And that may be economic, it may be, it could be any number of things. But I, as I said, I don't care if it's, well, I I care if it's three or five years. I'd rather it be ten years, cause I'd rather we're onto something that's working.
I I agree with you on that. I really do. Cause I think consistency following it over time. It also allows you to look at the curriculum and you can say, well, here, this curriculum doesn't seem to be working and this is where we prepare for the next. And you can begin to see where your inputs begin to impact consistently going over. The one area in the econo- in goal number one that I kind of would like to see us figure out how to address, and that is failure. You know, when do we begin to recognize where tier-two should come in and where tier-three comes in? And how do we catch the kids that are constantly moving over the proficiency line? They may be proficient one test cycle and unproficient the next. How do we begin to identify some of that and pull it in for some of these guys? I don't just see it as economic. I see it actually as engagement and what's going on with the kid.
And I think we should come back, I think part of the challenge So just to finish that off, I mean, it looks like there's a general it looks like there's a general of making it longer. So is that what the board wants to do now? How do you, it would be really good to lay it out so everyone knows what they're getting into as well. So is it a five-year plan that we review every three, if, so it's basically tweaking the existing plan or looking at it, making adjustments and extending it? Like, what, how, I don't really mind. I just would like uh us as a board to to decide at least what we think is gonna happen. This could change.
Right.
What are we saying that we are doing?
Well, I think that's that's the risk with a longer timeframe plan, is that we're we're locking into these measures now and they may be too high, they may be too low. And having those quarterly or semi-annual check-ins, monitoring progress is helpful, you know, keeping us and the public informed of progress. But what if we are way off target? What if we, you know, we've been too ambitious or not ambitious enough? That's what I worry about with something longer than three years and I, um you know, if I'm in the minority here, so so be it. But um I don't think that this is, the year one that we're entering right now is a total waste. It's definitely not to our advantage that we don't have a budget yet and we all know that, that's the elephant in the room, right? But I mean, there are some good signs, at least about the federal Title I funding coming through. Um and I I think that a lot of these strategies and activities here, they're not new. They're continuing what the district has been doing for some time. And so I'd hate to just discount this year one as, you know, we're just planning. Um and really, it's year two that's gonna be implementation. We're gonna hit the ground running with implementation here. I have that confidence in our administrators and teachers. Um it's, I think, more of a me- a question of if administration feels like, you know, we need, we do need more and we need to come back to the board and ask for a policy change, or do we dip into our long-term savings? Um or is there a shuffling of resources that the board would approve? You know, and that that can happen at any moment and it just doesn't dissuade me from going for a a three-year.
I I have concerns about the five-year, but I will say, I think three years does have fundamental problems, so.
One of the things that we haven't talked about is staff. And I I I would think that teachers, and again, I'm gonna speak as somebody who's never been a teacher, would like something like the time to have this unfold and like consistency and continuity. And if it's producing results and we're seeing that, I I don't see them wanting the board necessarily then to try and reinvent the wheel again in three years. I But Josie, you're right, we we could be off track. And and I think it's kind, we need to depend on YouTube to tell us that something's not working. Does that involve owning a strategic plan or does it involve a reassessment of a particular curriculum? I I I don't know, but that's the early warning system I'm gonna depend on.
So working off of a five-year plan with maybe a three-year automatic like board question in three years' time to sit there and say, we have
I wouldn't do it every thi- I'd do it every single year. I think you, I think the board commit to a strategic plan, a review of metrics within the strategic plan. And then whether whatever you do, three, four, five, like
Yeah.
every year, you're gonna re-evaluate if it's beating the mark and if an adjustment needs to be made. Every year, the board sets aside a study session to identify and make sure that the the metrics and those things are correct. What if the state changes the test? What if they no longer pay for NWA? We could be facing that in two months.
Right.
They pay the entire bill for all of our assessments.
Or Title I or state
Right, the federal dollar. So I I really think you don't have a choice but to look at it every year, to be honest. And so I think that the board just commits, whatever time you wanna go, that each year, there'll be a study session to evaluate the components and if there's any adjustments needed in the metrics. Again, hopefully not, but I think it's important that you identify that.
Scott, just quickly, to your second question though about how do we avoid this um goofy period where the, you know, previous one ran out?
I think, I think it's the thing is, it's done.
We just probably restart the new plan sooner than, you know.
I think with the way John laid it out, it almost
And the annual, yeah.
The annual, a more detailed, dedicated meeting to a s- study session to to
You're gonna wanna align resources, I think, after you get your budget, you're, you know, you try and hopefully it's sooner in the future. And sit, you know, each, you know, early on, probably just a- as you're adapting budget, kinda look to go, are there shifts in that? Are there, you know, does this priority, is this, are these uh, you know, resources working, you know, that align to it? Did the state change the test? Did they, you know, all those things you may have to grapple with.
Okay, so general consensus, five-year plan, one year, a study session every year to review where we are.
Mm-hmm.
Get confirmed, run track.
Mm-hmm.
Go on track, make any tweaks as needed or adjust to any
Mm-hmm.
conditions that have changed. Alright, that was a big one. I know it took a little bit, but I think it's fundamental as we go now through the rest of the questions, cause it really affects everything we talk about, I think. So I don't think there was any other overarching unless you guys can think of any. I think that was the main one. So with that, let's go back to uh goal one and open it up to board and let's let's uh start that. Who who would like to get yourself with any questions on uh goal number one?
I'm gonna, yeah. I, my concern, which I was already put in the wrong place apparently, uh is looking at the tiers and when we begin to address, when kids begin to have a problem. Cause I think if we wait too long, we're behind the kid and we wanna try and stay a little bit in front, you know, I think, pro act.
I know, and to just to give you some background as far as elementary, when we start to look at that tier and Tiffany can speak to this a little bit, we talked about LRE, we have another acronym, of course, in education, least restrictive environment. So when we, when we look at least restrictive environment, right, especially when we're looking at K-one and we're looking at, you know, the discrepancy between boys and girls and how they grow and academically where they catch up. We wanna make sure that we're giving them every opportunity to grow before we start accommodating their learning, right? We wanna make sure that they need that accommodation. So generally speaking, what I've seen when I was in uh e- elementary as an administrator, we would We would see that that task, we call it um teachers addressing student concerns. It's a task group when a teacher would have a concern about a child for various reasons, but if we start about academics. You know, really start to kick in end of first grade, beginning of second. And that's where we'd see, there there's tier two taking place, especially in reading before that. But that that's where we wanna try to get most of our our tier two started is in that second grade to make sure we give that child. Every opportunity to make sure developmentally they're where they need to be, so we're not accommodating when they don't need it.
I just get concerned that some kids hit the wall. And then if if they hit the wall right by the the end of the school year. And there's no summer school, there's nothing. And then they come even a little bit further behind when they start the next grade. Those kids are really hard to to make feel good about what the material is and catch them up.
Catch them up and keep them where they need to be at grade level at the same time.
And a lot of this we're not gonna have answers to. I think a lot of this is the feedback portion, so we can go through and then.
Just a quick comment that I fully support focusing on literacy and math and and I will challenge us administration. Um, to have one ambitious goal for each instead of four. That might be hard. Um, and and I also believe the targets are too low. I think over five years collectively us together um can can aim higher. So depending on whatever that's that goal is that we focus on, um, I think I think with the right tools, community partnerships, family partnerships, we can we can aim higher.
So when you talk about like one ambitious goal, are you talking K twelve?
I'm talking about one literacy goal that you, I would prefer one instead of four literacy, I would prefer one math goal instead of four. And I will defer to you on what you think that that goal is most meaningful. Um, but four, to me, I don't, I don't know, I just, it's rough for me to to have four literacy goals.
I just don't have it that large of a.
Yeah, that's different kinds of things.
Like, I I think I I generally do support your point in less goals, but I feel like there has to be an elementary and a secondary on this.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, and maybe it has to be, but again, there's no science or social study goals, even though those are very, very important, right? So just because they're not in the plan, um, doesn't mean we're not focusing around that.
Yeah.
So I guess I would prefer one literacy goal. Um, in the game to get all of these goals under ten, cause again, thirty four is too many in my in my opinion.
I I would lean for elementary, a- again, it's tough as far as, cause if you wanna take baseline data and find a measure, right? That's consistent, we don't have a consistent, obviously a K twelve measure. My my, another issue, right, then you create a goal and you have all these sub-goals in order to keep measurement of it. I like the idea of going to one, it's, I I would much rather have N W A as a goal than M step. Just because it's a, it's a living document, right? That's, I I have M step in there because like you said, you know, previous board meetings. That's the measure that gets, you know, record eagle and people recognize and, but N W A is, as I've gone back and forth and said that that's rubber, it's a road, right? And I can take that goal and put it in front of every teacher. So if we go one way or the other, that's the direction I go.
I support that, especially if we have a dashboard being built up that we can put up the top of our website and people can click on it just that like they can with with state assessments, so.
Um, I've got one really fast one then over, like when we're talking about the cohort, I love the having the K through five. As or at least a wider group, because as you said, like it takes away that individual class that can skew the numbers. I feel like we should leave out potentially K because the influence that we can have, that's almost the baseline. Of what we can, what we received versus what we can do. So that would be my only thing is. But I, it it's part of the cohort, it's okay, it's it should would show growth, that was my only point.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Ty a quick clarifying question, but he's out of the room, so Sarah, did you wanna say something?
I I would actually change if we were to take K out, cause Jesse and I talked about this a little bit today, we've talked about this several times, I'd almost go two, five. Because N W A is a K one test and then there's a two, five test and then there's a six, eight test. So if we're talking about cut scores and like data, like a score in second grade is actually the same um cut score as a goal as a score in fifth grade. But a score in first grade is not the same as second because the test is is read to them K one, they have to read the test. So I guess if I were to redo it, I would think I'd do a two, five N W A for.
And that's, again, this is this is just a thought.
I I like the idea, cause it, right now, it's it's a challenge in our system. We we can work through it by double pulling and taking kids out of spreadsheets. But our J K register is K kids. So getting that J K, the junior kindergarten to kindergarten separated. That that's about five extra steps, I mean, we can do it, but if we do a two, five, that would make it as far as dashboard wise, a lot more useful.
Yeah, it's a little more j- like, the the less data you have to adjust, also to me makes the data stronger, cause it's just taken.
Can you have some mechanism for early childhood on how to evaluate whether or not kids are coming in prepared, any better than they were the previous year?
Not great. I mean, there's some different ones out there, but you know, the 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 issue you generally often have is that you have kids that have not had a preschool experience that walk in. And so here they are, registration day, and parents get to choose what they want. So we do try and do some evaluation in the first weeks with kids. And we do have conversation with parents if we think, you know, there's there, but there's not solid, I mean, there are different things out there, brigants. K A, I mean, they're different things, but not one that I think has just been everybody's believed in strong.
Yeah, but I I like Ty the idea of just less goals, I'm a big fan of like, let's do the really important stuff right and and stay narrow. I just, I don't know, I I'd have to think about how to make it meaningful for all of our people. What I really like about having the eighth grade, that's a huge transition year, we all know, into high school and having that. I can rally and we can rally all of our secondary staff around an eighth grade goal and eleventh grade goal. I mean, everybody in those buildings has those kids and can own that and can feel like they can do work to impact that. I just, I don't know what a K twelve literacy goal would look like that would be meaningful to the people doing the work. Do you know what I mean? Like I I I just need a little more thought on that.
That's why we're hashing it out.
Okay, I thought maybe you had an idea. I was like, oh, let's tell me what your idea is.
Josie, uh, when you were out of the, when you left Josie, I guess one of the questions was a clarifying question to you, is it Josie?
Yeah, when you say one literacy goal, one math goal, did you mean one for all grade levels? So.
Uh, not necessarily. I just think something by twenty thirty, that as a district, we can set a goal around literacy. And get pumped that we've achieved this ambitious goal. And again, I'll defer to our academic officers. Um, but I would prefer less, less goals that we dream big on. And and allocate resources accordingly and the tools and provide support. That's just, again, that's just me providing feedback tonight. I mean, uh, I could vote yes on four literacy goals, I'm not sure.
Or or three.
I I will just say for my part, I liked that you had elementary school, middle school and high school goals. I really did. I thought that was very meaningful to have K through five and eighth grade and eleventh grade. Of course, my first, you know me, my first reaction was, wait, what about grade six, seven, nine?
And they feed all into it.
Right, exactly. And if as long as, you know, you you believe in your, you know, you train and develop the, everybody to have that joint responsibility. I think that's everything. Um, but but I I would be afraid to just pick, say, third grade. Reading, which is a very popular thing right now nationally, and there's the Mississippi story. Because it really could come at the expense of math or, you know, high school, middle school. So I like the spread that you have come up with. Um, I I my, and I just wanna back up for a minute and just say very high level. You know, this was an incredible amount of work that you all have done in less than two months since our last strategic planning session. And um, there's a lot of good goal setting and ideas in here and you had to do this. Um, you know, when there aren't a lot of staff around to consult and you're competing with the sunshine. So I just wanna give you a lot of kudos for this uh plan that you've developed. For goal one, I do feel like these middle school and high school targets are reasonable, they are meaningful and achievable. Uh, but I am concerned about the K through five goals being too modest. Um, that five percent growth target for all over five years, that equates to an average of one percent per year. And to me, I mean, I think you're just automatically gonna get more than that. Um, I would like to see something more than three percent per year. I I know that sounds more, much more ambitious, but I just. I really believe it is achievable. You guys, this last year in particular, but even going back, you know, since twenty twenty two, the the end of COVID. Um, this district has put so much into investing in new curricula, the C K L A for elementary school, the middle school math. Um, you know, the instructional rounds, the behavioral coaches, social worker in every building. I mean, there have, there has just been so much effort that I know is going to pay off and we're gonna start seeing those results. Year one, year two, and I think we just, by not setting that goal a little bit more ambitious. I think we might be sending the wrong message to staff and the community that we don't have the confidence in all the good work that you're doing. Um, I believe in the administrative, the administration, both at the building level and the central office, and I believe in our teachers to carry it out. Um, so I just really wanna encourage, you know, more ambitious but achievable goals for that K through five.
And I think if you don't mind, that will be the kickoff to the next. I think it's critical to get through the number of goals, like, cause we've got a few different ways.
Yeah.
To go. And then I think that ties into it as well, because we may be talking about something that we're gonna cut back anyway. So I don't see, I've talked to Ty and I'm actually a big, uh, I think a lot of us want to see less goals or at least. Ones that really make a difference and stand out like a dashboard as well. So, but I don't see, I mean, how does everyone feel on goal one? I don't. We've got uh elementary, secondary, uh schools, we've got two or three sets of data here. Middle and high school, English, math, disadvantaged, not disadvantaged so far. Which if you actually break them down, it's probably gonna be. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, depending on how you do economically disadvantaged, that could be anywhere from ten to twelve goals. Um, how, in one section, how, what, what do we feel like that? How do you, how do you want that to be? I mean, is there any better way? I don't know if there is.
I mean, I would just, I I like the separation of the 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 high school, middle school. I do like that separation. I think it's gonna make a lot more sense as we uh drill down to those goals. And I understand why uh just looking at economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged. I mean, it's a way to look at where our resources will go, uh, when we're really trying to drill down and target. So, um, you know, in in my opinion, I I don't, I don't mind the the way, I mean, I'd like less goals are are better, right? Because you do target, but I also understand, um, I'm not sure I'm helping.
I I don't know if that's a good answer. I think I think generally speaking, we all agree the same thing. I'm just trying to merge the, what we think we want versus.
Can I try and bring a little and just questioning like what Dan had thought about? So, let's see if we can get at this. So the thoughts of two, five versus K five? Thoughts on that?
It's K five now, I mean, and I I assume that's why we did K five.
And Dan talked about, I think maybe while you were in the restroom, right?
Oh, I see.
We talked about two, five because K one's different and the sets, the the cut scores and everything of N W A, then second grade, second feeds third. And up, so we had the conversation about going two, five.
I'd be okay with two, five.
I would be okay with two, five. And one of the things Ty that you missed was K, one of the tests is literally pretty.
They have to read it to the kids, K one.
It's read.
It's it's what you, it's what you received into the system, it's not what you've achieved, so it kind of distorts what we're achieving. So I I like the two.
And 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 I guess, let me caveat this with, I think, but to Ty's point earlier. I think we take this and it comes back to the board again.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think we need to be voting or deciding, but I I encourage feedback and then bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah, so this is kinda what Dan has, so I kinda want feedback on each of these reasons. And kinda see where the where the board's at. So I think that the two, five.
And then just as far as feedback, as far as, you know, I mentioned at the beginning, Jesse and I is as far as the achievement, do you want just the achievement final measure? So for instance, if you're looking at the baseline, right, and I would change, if we're looking for more rigorous goals and we're specifically gonna use N W A. Instead of talking about ten percent, five percent, do we just wanna do um all students at sixty five and economically disadvantaged at fifty? You see what I'm saying? Where where we actually have a a spot we wanna hit as far as percent proficiency, rather than talking about they're gonna grow a certain percentage over time. And in a five year cycle.
Does that kind of stymie us though if they change N W A and the cut scores?
Hmm, good point.
Well, I I again, I would go back to, we really gotta look at what, first of all, we're gonna see them in the fall, so if they're really impactful, then we'll know going forward. Again, I think, and we're talking about spring to spring data, right? All the data that we pull for N W A like this is, these are all spring scores. Um, spring scores, we also talked about in board curriculum as far as uh fall, winter, spring N W A, if we were to look to trim assessments. You know, it'd be more of a winter, we're gonna talk more on board curriculum about that this coming month, but spring would never be touched, people. Teachers have come back, we surveyed teachers, they like to spring measure, so that's a a good spot for us. So I think as far as to to look at rigor, right, increasing the rigor, but also to look at, instead of putting a percent on it, that can be confusing. You know, just as far as us thinking together here, moving to a an an actual proficiency score or a proficiency percentage would make more sense in a percent.
I I agree. Measure it on an annual basis though, can we measure progress towards that goal?
We could break it down into five years for a year.
The reason I like the percentages is because basically you have an annual goal and you're trying to get.
It, yeah. I can theoretically figure it this way, find the sky, you meet twelve percent one year, great, we only gonna meet eight percent this year. You know, why, you know, why not, let's hit, let's aim for the goal here and show progress and and it may be not as much as we want. What's the extra scoops ice cream we gotta put on this thing? Or while we're really doing well on this, and so kudos, you know.
And I think the annual becomes with a, we gotta at least go out to as far as trend goes, right, to get all other variables. Like, you know, Jesse started by saying, education is not, you know, supply, demand, where we can put numbers on anything. It's about fifteen thousand variables that go into a kid learning how to read, uh, including everything that they bring into the classroom. So if we wanna actually look at trend, if we go just year to year, e- every variable feeds into that. We want an upward trend, right? That's a goal of everybody. So how do we get to our final goal, looking at an upward trend over five years? That's another advantage of five is that, you can just see by our data here, right, it's our, it's where we're at here, we go fifty three, we go down two percent, we go down two percent. We go up seven percent. What did we do between twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four? Can anyone count and look at what what are the variables we put in place to suddenly go up uh seven percent?
That's the challenge with the large cohort, I mean, it's hard to know with that large cohort.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what it was. It'd be harder even with a smaller cohort, cause these numbers would be all over the place. That's the other downside. That's why you need to to look at it, I, that's why I like the five year also, because you actually can show a trend and it's not like, look what we did this year.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna get at the end of five years and suddenly say, wait a minute, we know we're close to where we're supposed to be and how did we miss this going forward?
Oh, for sure. And and that's where we talked about study session every year. Right, and it'd be nice too to do study session if we don't include M step, we can do the study session in the spring, cause we have most of our data.
We do, and then we could even say, maybe we need some more resources in these areas because we're not making the hurdles that we would want. Or that we were hoping we would make, right? And and if we had that, I mean, we get our P S A T results that last week in June, we would be able to in July say, he- here's where we are. M step's a little different, cause you guys have the scores, but we cannot talk about those in this meeting, you can't share those, we can't put them on a graph. We can't make any type of like make changes, but we have to be secretive about it.
Same bucket as the budget.
To your point about spring updates, right, right before budget time, we can help have that informed decision of that. And that's why I prefer, like, again, that's why I like it, N W A, and I think if we communicate the sixty percent equals proficiency, then I can do a better job of explaining, actually, I know you're reading M step scores in the paper. Here's how that our internal assessments align with that, so.
Christine?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. Um, we're focused on teaching and learning and I understand that you can get data and so if we can create ways to get data. I wanna make sure the focus isn't time and energy on getting data, that it's actually time and energy on teaching and learning and strategies. So I mean, I've just seen how much work you've put it in just to get this to create something. So just make sure you're thinking about what are the goals and how can we get the data easily? Not spending, you know, two weeks on getting data for an update that we do on an annual basis that isn't going to uh improve teaching and learning. So I'd be cautious of that.
And that's why that state who does M step for us, we don't have to create any graphs, and Dan creates beautiful graphs, don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah, it does not.
I did some color stuff here.
I can't even believe you said that.
Oh, that's awesome.
But just, I mean, once a year, you know, Dan's graph time.
Thank you, there was some graph time.
I I a hundred percent agree with Christine that I I know how much time and energy and and again, you're talking to an entire, well, mine is Sarah, of non teachers, right? And so we have to rely on on you and what is measurable. Of non-teachers, right, and so we have to rely on, on you and what is measurable in your eyes. And so, um, sometimes I sit here quietly, because I'm, I'm really. Um, trusting that your process of how we're gonna do this is, is what we're gonna do, so.
And I think what's nice about if we use NWA and PSAT, SATs, we get a fall rate on it, right? Like, when we got back that data with eighth grade math, and, I mean, I wasn't joking, I texted Dr. Dean Wagner, and then I was on the phone with Kristen and Ryan. Our two middle school principals, thinking about, okay, if, it's June, we gotta think about how we're gonna redo things differently, we gotta run some, what's class size is smaller? We gotta think about what our CO-TOCs are, I've got a high school math teacher who's exceptional, who's gonna go and coach some of those kids, I mean, like, we already were. Because we had the data then saying, we gotta set the stage differently, because we can't, we can't have kids go to school every day and learn math for an hour. And only one third of that type of proficiency, right, so.
That's why I get nervous about this blending of the cohort groups, I mean, one of the things that's valuable is to have something to pinpoint. To see where the problem areas are, and the more data you get, the easier it is to hone in on that. And it may be a classroom teacher, it could be a curricular problem, but the more we blend it, the harder it is then to pinpoint that.
Not really though, I think the overall goal, I think, you know, teachers and principals, you know, classroom to classroom, will look at those things and those elements. For us to be able to see that again, going back to Ty's statement, just because it's not, there's a goal, doesn't mean we're not doing that. And I think that's the process of us reporting that out in curriculum committee, of as we have these either two or three, depending on what grade it is. NWA assessment or SAT, we have a, we have a measuring stick, grade by grade and class by class. And Sarah can tell you, our teachers and our principals, they sit and look at that, have that, look at the RIT scores and have that element for. A third grade, grade class at central grade elementary with this teacher.
Drill it all the way down to the students, and who, and how, and, yeah.
And I think, I, I, I mean, it's just basic statistics is, would suggest that if the, if you just take one of the population, you better take. You have to take a number of the population, the N has to be high enough, otherwise the confidence is just, is gonna go way down, so.
That's what Dan was saying yesterday, is the N score, you know, that.
Is my favorite, uh, I, yeah, I'll put that aside for now, but statistically, I think you should have the large, and I do like the two, three, five, cause it's measurable.
And Scott, I just wanted to also add that over, I mean, over the last four and a half years since I've been on the board. The administration would present the NWEA scores biannually, fall and spring. And it'd be, sometimes it would be like, you know, by grade, not only grade level, but by building level. So we would see, what, all twelve or eleven elementary school, you know, and that was super helpful, and I think that's important going forward. Not only for the administration, but for us and the community to just see, you know, what are the strengths and the areas for improvement. Um, we, you know, obviously have a lot of volunteers in the community who are helping Blair and Traverse Heights, but there might be a Silver Lake. Or another building emerged that need extra help.
And I'll just comment, uh, Josie, we've really, we do that behind the scenes, we have been really reluctant to do that. Because certain buildings feel that they are, uh, it becomes a comparison, especially in a, especially in a district. That has two high schools and two middle schools, it becomes a, why did they score higher than us type of a thing, so Dan and I do that. When we pull this data, we pull it here, we show you guys everybody, and then we pull it for our principals, and we look at buildings, and then we pull and look at teachers. And then that secondary is, we pull and look at courses, what courses, where are our kids who have the greatest needs, and are we ensuring that we have the right supports there? What are the hours, we actually pull up like first hour algebra one versus sixth hour algebra one. Um, so I just, I, I would need directive as to what you guys want, we just wanna be mindful of. Pitting ourselves against ourselves.
Yeah, a- and it might open the door to parents wanting to open and roll and buildings that, you know, are outperforming other buildings or whatever. And, and appear to be, yeah, appear to be, exactly, I think I would, yeah.
And I think we're already, we've already established as a board, we're uncomfortable with how many goals we're probably gonna have, especially in this goal one anyway, so. I think when we get to the review, they have to break down of why this happened.
Okay, so I think we'll take that two, five concept with the proficiency, we'll, let's, let's take that back for that now, let's talk middle school. I know I heard Jesse say eighth grade, PSAT. Was there something else there?
No, my only question was if, again, if you do, we're, we're identifying, are we comfortable with the fact that we are gonna see variation? Based off of the cut, the grading themselves?
Because at least we have two metrics of that, eighth grade, correct, SAT.
We have a fall and a spring, yes.
Yep, we have two, two elements with that, and then the SAT stays consistent now, all the way through, like, we've got a consistent measure. It builds, it, the col-, it's all a college board product all the way through, as well as AP is college board, like, you've got a lot of consistency there. That we've never really had, I mean, it's finally gotten to this point, like, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we just took the ACT.
It was not that long ago.
They changed, and now they've gone down and down and down, and it feeds and builds and gives predictability towards that SAT score. And you've got the, the, the portal that's built, you've got Khan Academy resources that are built, so all of that for kids and parent resources. There's a lot there that's to like about the SAT, that you really don't have with an NWA or whatever at that point. Once you get, you know, to the, the, that eighth grade and a transition measure, it's awfully nice, we're finally kinda getting there. To have that, that predictability.
I fully support the SAT portion, I think my question was like, obviously not every group of kids is made equal every year. So you're gonna see natural up and down, so is there any way to smooth that out, like, in the elementary, we've done a cohort, so there's, there's. You, you can only get so far from where, I, that's my only.
I mean, my feedback is, I, I'm fine with PSAT in eighth grade for math, and I think you know why, so if we were gonna go to one goal for math, it would be the PSAT eighth grade.
And we've thought, we've had that conversation.
Yeah, we have, I mean, for sure, our, our class, and I've said this before, that we watch really hard is our algebra one class. If a ninth grader student who fails that is very unlikely to graduate on time, um, it's not any shocker, it's, you know, it's different than a lot of our schools. That's why we already, when we saw this last, see, you look the last three years in this eighth grade, it wasn't just this last year that like, made the middle school principals and I very anxious. It was like one, two, three years in a row, and I was going, okay, hold on, timeout, we gotta, we gotta fix this and really make. Figure out how to put some more resources into this, um, eighth grade's that big transition year, so I, I, I like the English as well. Because our other teachers, you know, at East and West Middle School, your social science teachers, your science teachers, your English. You can get all of those guys on board about literacy and literacy instruction, and how to support kids who are below grade level. And so I, I think there's more buy-in from the staff if we include both math and the LA getting great.
Support.
So.
I just feel bad that we're on a downward trajectory.
Yeah, me too.
Beth, you don't wanna know how bad I feel, I feel really bad about it.
I'd, I'd like to catch it before it keeps going down too far.
And I think that's what we're doing right now.
And I hope so.
Yeah, and to, and I hope that we all provide the resources for this consistent tier-two support across the elementaries, and maybe that ties into our next conversation.
Okay, then, so same thing with eleventh? So that, so I think we've done with one, at least giving you guys enough feedback, the only question I don't think we covered with, just to close it out. Was the economically disadvantaged versus not, how we want that as a goal, um, I think we wanna see that gap closing, I don't know. I, I think we want that, I, I'm okay to say that we do want that to be part of the goal, and leave it to you to kind of.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Um.
I agree, there's full, four bullets here, eight measures of success, overall growth and the economically disadvantaged, and I think that's perfect. I just, like, I would like to have more of a discussion of the K through five target growth. Are folks comfortable with five percent overall over five years, or is that something that we feel like we could be more ambitious about?
I think we took that away with, didn't we, to the proficiency goal?
So it could be grade two to five, instead of K five for NWEA, and then the M step is grades three to five. Right now, those are both target growth of five percent total over five years, with the economically disadvantaged group being double that.
And my feedback would just be that, I mean, Jesse and Dan sat with their team and their leaders, and they developed these plans. And how to measure those achievable goals, and so, I mean, I'm just, I'm comfortable with where our goals are at. And I think, again, in one year, when we sit and go through a review, if we've, you know, we can always adjust. Um, if we want to make, you know, see the growth and we want to see more growth, you know, achievement, then I think, I think we can adjust. I don't think we're saying we're gonna be stuck with this five percent.
I, I, I don't think five percent over five years is aggressive enough, it's, but again, I'm not about here. To see you can go to a dartboard and tell you what that number ought to be, but it, it's got to be more aggressive than one percent, I think.
Yeah, I think just based on what we discussed before, let me pull the, cause this is K five, so, once I pull two, five data, we can find a, I think I can find a proficiency point. That makes sense between all students and economically disadvantaged, that does two things, right, that we see more than a five percent growth. But then we also see that achievement gap closing, that, that'll be my goal, right, more than five percent for everybody. But an achievement gap that's under twenty percent.
Uh, does your gut tell you that the grade two to five grouping would, would lend itself to that?
No, I, I don't think it lent itself more than the K five, but it, like, like I discussed earlier, just having the, the same standards for each. I, I think the, the data will actually be pretty similar, as far as you're still gonna have a, an, an achievement gap that's over twenty percent, that we've seen throughout all of our data. So the goal is to get under twenty percent and everybody progressing more than five percent in five years. I, I'm just gonna look for a round number to hit, like, right here, if I were to do this right here, maybe we hit an achievement goal over five years of sixty percent for all students. And fifty percent for, um, economically disadvantaged, yeah, seventeen and a half.
It's gonna be tough for me to vote yes on twenty percent gap, but I'm just.
It'd be less, my, my goal is, cause right now, we, we don't have a data point that's, that's under twenty.
Which is, I'm just gonna stay, and I'm just one of sevens, but, no, and I, and I always go back to my favorite slide from the equity study session. Where our leadership team talks about, they have two jobs, one job is to improve outcomes significantly, and to Scott's point, I don't think one percent is significant. And I think together, and I'm looking at ourselves to hold ourselves accountable with the things that we control, including the budget, and how we appropriate dollars to the classroom. You know, I think that's a way to do that, and their second job is to, you know, decrease, you know, uh, achievement gaps, you know, while managing everything else there is to take care of. At the building, so, I'd like us to stand with them with those two jobs, um, I'd love to see ten percent, um, five years.
As far as the achievement gap.
Overall growth, you're talking?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it depends on what do you even come back with the, with the, whatever makes sense with the proficiency, uh, with a gap, a lot less than twenty percent.
Right, right.
Double it, but we're only at two percent, and we've got a ways to go, certainly in math.
I'm just saying, if, if you go ahead and double your percentage for all students, and your economically disadvantage is gonna have to be that handsome. So if we're talking about a, uh, an achievement gap that's less than twenty percent, right, that's a substantial growth over five years. Of our econom- economically disadvantaged students, I just wanna know if we come back a second time, we wanna come back a third time. And figure out what that, eh, the, as far as achievement gap goes, what numbers the board comfortable with, I was thinking under twenty?
Yeah, I, I, personally, I, I don't think any number I have is gonna match what Ty has, but I also understand that. That we have to be aggressive in that number as well, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what that number is, but.
Research will show you that math, it tends to be larger, which is sort of what we saw here, that's why we said, let's see if we can get to fifteen percent. In reading, you, there isn't as much of a gap, right, um, so.
I think it just seems to me it's incremental though, if you're, an achievement gap at a younger age. Is gonna be different than if that achievement never moves. You know, that, that gap, they, they never learn to read, and by the time you hit eleventh grade. You can't read nothing across anything, you know, how do you ever catch that kid up? If you've waited five or six years. You know, we can't let some of these kids get that far behind, because we'll have a, an impossible task. Of bringing them up, you know what I'm saying? And then the kid goes home or says to their friend, well, I'm just stupid, I'm just stupid, and I, I don't even need to try. And I kinda would prefer not to get there.
Well, I'm to Beth's point, I do fully understand that it's gonna be easier to close the achievement gap in the earlier grades.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Than the later grades, cause like, you haven't had the years of working with it, so.
And so when we have YL kids that walk in, you know, in the ninth grade, that's a tough challenge that, we have a lot of conversations about, about what. Tier two and tier three supports do we need for that, but valid point.
So, Dan, I just, to clarify, your NWEA and M-step, you know, K through five are now two, grades two through five. Your formula here seem to be like five percent overall, and double that in, increase of ten percent for economically disadvantaged students. So if we raised the overall growth target to ten percent overall, over five years, are you saying like? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be double that for economically disadvantaged, I mean, it could be fifteen percent, that would still help narrow. I would personally love to still double.
Sure.
The economically disadvantaged, but I'm gonna defer to you guys if you look at the data and you come back to us and tell us next time. You know, if that's feasible or not.
I think he wants to take that, correct me if I'm, I think he wants to take that and compare it to the proficiency mark, and bring that back and show you where he thinks that.
For two, five, NWA only, as far as, it seemed like the vibe I've gotten from the boards, we're, we're removing M-step.
Yeah, I think, I, I think in general, the boards, you've got enough that, I think you know that those numbers are gonna be the, probably the most subjective. Debate amongst the board when you come back, either way.
We knew that coming in, to be honest with you, you know, that's why we just kinda wanted a little bit of narrowing of thought, you know, so that we could.
Get rid of all the rest of the noise line, like of, of two through five, and we know what we're doing, we're just focusing on a couple of numbers here and there, it's gonna be a lot easier to.
Negotiating at this point.
Yeah.
Oh, we're putting all our cards down.
So anything else on goal number one?
One thing I will make a comment on, and I'm speaking now as a board representative, because public and, in theory was elected at some point here. Um, if we all of a sudden decide not to use M-step scores, those are the only ones that the public knows about, because they get publicized every year. We're gonna have to do some kind of a campaign to say, one, why we're not using M-step, and two, why we are using NWEA. And it's gotta be fairly pronounced, that's not your problem, that's probably more of a institutional problem.
Yeah, the nice thing about NWA, and so you could probably talk to this as, as a teacher, you know, NWA is, is by law, I believe it's part of the law. Sent home within thirty days of when it's taken, at every testing cycle, so.
Just fall and spring.
Just as far as fall and spring go, so our fall cycle, they take the NWA, uh, those are given out at parent teacher conference or mailed home. So they're aware, like, parents might be more aware, because they get that communication two to three times a year for every grade their kids in school for the last, since we've started it. I understand the record eagle part, right, where, where that's where it's, our M-step scores are, are put on the front page, but parents are aware, they know what NWA is, I think. Because the teacher takes that out and.
There's a larger group in the community that don't have kids that score.
Yeah, I was telling, our M-step scores will get distributed to sites, this is the funny part, and kids are all at different sites, right? If you move fifth to sixth, we have to resort them and send them to the right middle school, and then we send them home, and we always get the question of like, what is this? And that happens in October, just so we're all clear, and the kids took the assessment and, right.
And, and I will tell you that, um, some interesting things happening with assessment at the state level, that the federal government released an innovative waiver for assessment. Um, that I think we could see movement towards an M, NWA-like concept for our elementary testing. We'll see where that goes, but I think that there's a horizon, new state superintendent candidates will be announced tomorrow. And so we'll have a sense of what, start getting a sense of their thoughts, and that waiver is now real, um, at the federal level to consider, so.
Scott, I, I agree with you though, it could be more hurtful than helpful to remove the M-step metric. Right, I mean, if we, if the administration has to do extra work now creating a communications plan for the public.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to do it anyway, and it's, it's gonna be there, it's a, it's an assessment, we'll still present to the board, still present to curriculum committee. And like, again, Ty's point is, if you want another one, you know, based on the idea of trying to narrow down, no, but if we're not narrowing down, then it's in there, so.
But on the other hand, think of it this way, NWA is going up, God willing, so is M-step.
Predictability wise, you're right, yep, the test.
So you could just say, the number is slightly different, but notice the trend.
True.
I'll also add with regards to NWEA, that is what we utilize as our initial assessment for our read by third grade law, which is now our K-12 literacy law. So a part of that law ensures that we are actively communicating to, um, parents and families. So a part of that law ensures that we are actively communicating to um parents and families. When students have been identified as at risk and what we're doing as a school system to not only provide those supports. But then what they can be doing apart with the family engagement component, so it really adds that additional layer. Of how we're utilizing and communicating student progress with N W E A.
Alright, um I do, and if there is anything critical, please add it, but I do wanna try and move on, cause otherwise we will run out of time.
Is there a halftime?
We passed halftime, and that's why we need to get get on, um so moving on to goal number two, um any questions from board members?
I don't have any questions, but just real quick, a comment that I I love this this new goal, this is the only one of the five that is new from the. From the previous uh plan around health, well-being and school connectedness, um. You know, it builds on Misty's work with the whole child systems, it builds on the the health and well-being systems change work that was funded by Rotary. Uh I do appreciate including our after-school and uh summer enrichment programs. Um, I think that's great, it is the only uh major goal here that hasn't been discussed at committee level or had a study session. And I would recommend um scheduling one, I appreciate all the the data dive. Into the twenty-three, twenty-four numbers, um I think registration numbers, if I if I'm, if I heard you right. Um Dan or uh registration numbers aren't enough, I I we need data around unique students served. Uh we also need a demographic breakdown of these uh unique students. If if you go to the the table, they did have the percent free reduced lunches relates to registrations and I'm all for counting our community partnerships, like those count. Uh but if we are gonna count them, I'd like to know the the percent breakdown with those demographics, how many percent are are economically disadvantaged. Um kids, uh especially if they're off-site programs. Uh because as we know, transportation can be a barrier for our kids further from opportunity. So I I would like to see some equity metrics built into this this goal around after-school and summer. Um program personally, I've I've said this before, I'd love to see the L restored and leap for learning, I think uh we should strive to include that. Safety, just to hit on safety, and I didn't know that we had a private internal student survey, so. I I thought this number came from the perception survey with students, so I'm not, but now it makes sense because they didn't drive. Um, and I guess my my only maybe feedback is that if we are talking about school connectedness, like Jay talks about the sense of belonging. Um that we did in our students' perception survey, have a percent of kids who did feel like they belonged to their school was seventy-one percent. Um but overall, I'm I'm pumped that we have this goal, if we can have fewer goals, I'd even be more pumped.
So ju- just wondering about that, when you talk, do you want to do like eh do a leap board curriculum to address the equity part, or do you actually want? Cause you said fewer more goals, Sophie, fewer do you want, but do you do want an equity piece in this?
I do, I I personally wanted equity to make sure, cause we've talked, we've heard at last board meeting that that potentially this new facility could help with equity. It could also in my mind make the equity worse, um so and that's something that we've never discussed, I've never heard us talk about on a committee level or board. About our after-school and summer programs, um but I'm happy to have this as a baseline, I and I know we're only have a few weeks left, but. Um if we are gonna include leap in this strategic plan, I I don't think we've done enough. And and I don't wanna spend all night talking about it right now, but I I don't, I think a study session would serve us well.
May I, no, no, if we're gonna have ability to add a study session before we have a strategic plan. But it could be one that we take a best stab at and do that review in the first year as well and have another study session and um. Other than that, I don't disagree with any of your comments, I think it's, it is good to know, I I also will say that there's no way if we set our. We set the goals with achievable ambition. That we cannot do that without focusing on getting as many people involved as we can, so there is a little bit of a self fulfilling. Uh nature to it, but um I'm okay with however we want to do that, but I do like having the goal, we are showing that connected, connected to school is great. Um I will say that when you have a hundred percent targets on anything.
Yeah.
Uh, I, there's there's two ways to look at it, I mean, it has to be obtainable, like a smart goal, and it's not. I don't care, you can have one kid have a bad day and then you fail, um and guarantee you that someone is, um. The the only way to get around that is if you do have it, is to turn the turn the focus a little bit and say, okay. If they don't say that, why not, and then you focus on eliminating those.
Barriers.
Barriers, so the focus doesn't necessarily become we're gonna hit hundred percent, it's the focus on why they're not achieving it, um. That's the only way I ever support a hundred percent of this, it's not achievable.
Mm-hmm, can can I make one more comment about data collection, so LEAP concerns me because of da- data collection, they don't enroll through Power School. Which is we where we house demographic information so for students, so I would just be interested in Dan and. Um his team coming up, what with the data we collect, what can we get, and if you wanna collect other data. Might we have to consider other systems, one we have might not get us what we need. That's, I just have a concern about that.
Yeah, at at the secondaries, we do collect those in Power School, there's an activity field usually, that's what we here, Sophie and I pulled out of to get those numbers. Um so might be doable, but if we're gonna add a a subpopulation to look at that, I gotta think about how. How are we gonna pull that in a way that makes sense, cause right now I.
Or or it doesn't make sense, that would be one goal that might come off of this, I guess, if we're not ready to approve it, it would be my. You know, cause then, cause again, there's six, there's six measures of success under this second focus area, so. Um again, I'd like it to see down to one or two.
I just have, um I just have a a question regarding um the surveys, uh because we don't. Uh explain what percent of kids finish these surveys, and I remember a few years ago in curriculum, we talked about. The surveys were, um some of the questions were hard for, they just were very generic type questions and I'm, I just am curious if we're. We have revised those surveys and then what kind of pool of kids are finishing those surveys?
Yeah, and so I just pulled up uh one of our high schools, uh nine hundred and two kids at Central completed the survey last year. They think it was just over a thousand and less, so they did it, they do it during the school day now and they had to make a point to actually come on the announcement and they. And they've educated, because this teacher leadership team kinda takes ownership in the cert- like and the results, like the the leadership teams at both sites do. They really want kids to give their opinion and be able to to give that and it really is not, I I am more than happy to send you guys a copy. So you guys can see what it looks like, it's pretty, we potentially designed it to be short, um and it has a four-point strongly disagree to. Strongly agree scale, didn't do a five-point system with a lot of reasons why, um and we've kept it pretty consistent throughout the year. So we've been able to kinda hear more questions against questions, but.
That's great, I think those changes then have been implemented since we talked about surveys like a while ago, cause they were. I'm missing.
I think we just emailed and depended on them to do it.
Yes.
And now I think we have a a time now dedicated.
That would matter here, right, with regards to the school, so yeah, I think that that's great, um yeah, and obviously towards mental health. Um yeah, safety, so yeah, it's great.
Now, I will probably point out that that study probably does skew to kids who are in school, probably a form well, so we are. Biasing it a little bit against economically disadvantaged, I'm guessing, I'm not saying that confidently, but I'm, well, I am pretty confident. Uh sorry.
And the other thing I was gonna say, you know, for us to always say that transportation is an issue for low. Uh economic people is wrong, any single parent that is trying to do. Activity transportation for a kid, it doesn't matter what your income is, it's an issue. So for you to think that you have to not have finances. Not to participate in these and transportation is the key thing, it's not true.
I don't know if it's a key thing, but it's something.
Mm-hmm, so I'm 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 just gonna throw that out, having been a single parent, well, I'm a single, I'm a single parent.
Okay, I'm just saying broadly as a district, what percent of our kids further from opportunity are participating? And you can go to Traverse Heights and Blair and it's clear who is traveling to off-site programs and who isn't. So before we say throwing it is a problem or isn't a problem, I'd like to see the data and that's all I'm asking for is is some demographics on unique students who are participating.
But I I just wanna make sure that you understand that you don't wanna unfairly mischaracterize her. And I kinda think there's a a move in that direction.
I I just think about, you know, a two-parent dual income household that's affluent, that has, you know, at least two cars. And multiple drivers, maybe even a stay-at-home parent versus a low kim- low-income house where there's one car and it might be in disrepair. You know, that's just what I've seen in my lifetime, so and then the single parent too, that's not necessarily low income, but. I think there are transportation discrepancies between sub- subpopulations, I think that's where folks are coming from.
I would.
And I'd also just like to share that all of our voices matter at this table, so I think to just be respectful of one another and difference of opinion, I think goes a long way.
Yeah, I think.
Good point.
We uh do have.
Yeah.
This is the point of today is to get all those opinions.
Hey, I just want, oh Scott, go ahead.
No, I would say you were almost making progress here, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say with this goal two, I wanted to lift up that, you know, all of these five goals are interrelated. And this one is the heart of it all and the in like literally the heart, because as kids feel more connected. And a sense of belonging, they will want to come to school and if they come to school, there's no greater predictor. Of their success and their graduation, so i- it should result in fewer behavioral problems. Drive academic achievement up and create a a positive culture in our our district, which will help retain staff. So I just really see this one as pivotal, this goal two, the student well-being, right? It's gonna help maintain staff as well and I mean, but that that reduction of those kids who are chronically absent. The last two years, we've had twenty-one or twenty-three percent, I don't know about prior to that, um it might have been worse, I know statewide, it's a huge problem, it's up at like. Thirty percent, so again, I would just like to be a little more ambitious with that target for reducing our chronically absent goal. To, I mean, right now, you're trying to bring it down to eighteen, I would say how about fifteen percent? Um and really try to engage parents with that education of why it's so important for kids to have that seat time. So um that's one thing, and I know Dr. Van Wagner is in touch now with the shining star in the state, Calum Zoom. To learn from them and what they've done to bring down their chronic absentee rate, that that's one thing that really stands out to me. Um I regarding the fundraising for LEAP programming, we've talked about it a little bit, but I wanted clarity about whether that's really for all kids. Or is it for the kids who, you know, ha- qualify for reduced or no cost?
That's a question we have for you guys.
Right, right, I mean, I personally, I fundraising dollars are precious. And, you know, we have a very generous community, but I wouldn't feel right about asking folks to donate for a privileged family who can afford. The LEAP registration, I'd really like us to focus our efforts on the kids who are low income, so we can secure those dollars for the kids. Really need the help and then, you know, if there's extra fundraising for other efforts like mentoring and family nights at buildings and. Um maybe middle school clubs that could run before or after school, pay our teachers a stipend for that. Because they are paid at the high school level, but we have very few middle school level clubs, so that's just, you know, we're chasing limited dollars always. And that would be my preference.
Can I, not saying I disagree, let me play devil's advocate on that though. Um you take for instance Traverse Heights, they a year ago, their P T O said, we're gonna cover every kid. And I think more kids came out of the woodwork to know that just because every kid could, it wasn't a stigma, it wasn't so. Like what are you gonna qualify with our kid, is it that they have a free and reduced lunch form in? Is it, you know, just the, we're going to, that you have to volunteer and parents say it, some will not? You know, and now because a kid's parent was just, wouldn't say it, you know, especially if we do get universal lunch back, like in that element. Like that's a little bit of that barrier that, you know, if we if we say, you know, that we, if there was a day in the district where it was. Well, I think so, I'm speaking out of turn a little bit, I don't know, but you know, I know that when middle school and LEAP was created, it was cut, you know, budget. Budget things, but like that's, that's a little bit of the hard thing that I, you know, as we've talked, have debated in that, but. I you're right, there is a limited dollar and we've got a new office in that element, but philosophically, I think we wanted some guidance from the board on that thought.
I'd say hence the stu- hence the study session. It's gonna be a long night.
I mean, there's that dropdown menu, right, uh when you go to register a kid for LEAP, full full tuition or free or reduced. And the price goes down and you're doubling down on your efforts this year to get those forms turned in. Um so, I mean, I would just, you know, pounce on on that opportunity. But I just wouldn't personally, as a parent, feel right getting a handout like that.
So I always like the, do you have the, do you feel you have the ability to pay? Yeah, some people are gonna take advantage of the system, some people aren't gonna win the handout, but that is at least worded in a way that it's not uh judgmental, um.
Mm-hmm.
You can even follow it up with, do you, do you feel that you wanna sponsor someone else and then have that option, um. But I I don't know about free and reduced lunch, it's gonna be hard, we've gotta, obviously it really does does depend on what happens. Um and yeah, the 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 staff are gonna have to come back to Ty's point, maybe this is part of it, maybe it's not what, I think that. The point of this goal though is connectivity to school and that's one of the biggest measures we have, so.
Yeah. Under safety, um the goal two, he, the second goal here, the goal two, I just wanted to add for strategies and activities, this isn't a performance measure, but just. To stay abreast of best practices in school safety and security and pursue operational and infrastructure impro- improvements as warranted. Uh that's what you've been doing for several years, I just, that's an acknowledgement that that's an ongoing thing. And then under the third one about mental health supports, um just building on what Eric was talking about earlier too, I think. Just better promotion of the T-Caps Health Center for Behavioral and Physical Health Services, I just would love to see that um better be the most. So that's been a, I think, a great addition in our district for the last two, one and a half years, but.
Well, we may be even have it up for that, so we'll talk about later. Um so anything else on two, was there any comments? Um. Then moving on to goal number three, uh it's to Ty's point, if we're looking to reduce. Two or three are. Say they're semi, they're closer related than maybe some of the other ones, but um if we were looking to eliminate or condense, but. Um any questions on or comments on the three?
Just uh one, and that's in the measures for success. And uh I call them A and B, so A is the positive student behaviors. Um that they were saying that ninety percent of students report they feel respected by their peers. I'd like it to also ask, um do they respect as well as are respected? You know, it's a two-way street and the same thing with the teachers. Um do you feel that their peers treat teachers with respect? And are respected by their teachers and it sounds like that would be a positive. But to understand stability is a two-way street.
Yeah, I think the survey, didn't you say just the asset question?
Students treat me with respect, students treat staff with respect, staff treats students with respect, so that one's asked.
That one's there.
It's not one that we set a goal around, cause it's actually the s- the students score that quite high, that they think the staff does. Uh I know I'm gonna communicate with these staff, so there there's not one about I, what? Who said respect, I respect my other students.
I feel like you're just gonna buy it, no one's gonna buy it.
Kids say yes to that one, maybe not, alright, Dan.
Well, are you, are you respected and do you respect, do you respect the other guy? Do you feel that the other guy respects you?
I would love to hear from trustee Vajeras about this one idea, but under the second piece of positive response to student behaviors. What I hear about from my teacher friends is the mental health of the staff. And I'm wondering if we could add something under strategies and activities about mental health supports or referrals for staff. Um maybe even professional development for self-care, I don't know what, I defer to you, but I do, you know, I mean. The last five years have been very challenging for our teachers and other staff and I just. I just wanna support them as well, I know we've put a lot into stu- supporting students, but we gotta take care of our people too. Um, and then for a measure of success, I'm not necessarily advocating for this, again, I will defer to you. But if there's anything in our annual employee surveys or recent surveys about, you know, how does staff feel mentally, you know, their mental health, well-being. We'd have some baseline data and if you want to establish a growth target there, you know, like that's a possibility.
I'd be another goal, um.
Under goal three, positive student behaviors.
Yeah.
Do you think that would go under goal five, Josie, like, cause this is more like.
It could, I I thought there were more measures under goal five, um, but that that would be for retention, not for coaching staff.
It could. Yeah, I mean, it could go either way, wherever you think it best fits. Sure.
And I I do think that there are opportunities for our staff, you know, with the. Support ESP, uh, is available, I think a lot of the schools have gone to a health and wellness committee. I do feel like that has been a focus, is it perfect? No, it's not, either they're, the job is increasingly more demanding. And. But I do think the district is trying to support that the best they can, the best they can.
Um, other question, other comments on goals three?
I did think though, your your comments about, you know, maybe tying it into, um.
Retention.
Goal two.
No, well, part of it could go there, but then part of it could also go into goal.
The well-being.
To well-being.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Like if we're talking about adding a few things here, we could talk about merging those two as well, um, eliminating a couple again.
Right.
Mm.
What do you, what do you think about, I and I just thought of this, what do we think about on that positive student behaviors, what if we get rid of that restorative practice? It's really hard, it's not necessarily applicable all the time, but what if we made a sub-goal for that second one about suspensions? Just thinking about this economically disadvantaged, I we've never really pulled apart the data that way. Again, Christina, I'd have to work with them to make sure we could tag those fields appropriately, I actually think we will kind of miss this next one.
Nominal, but she's. I know. Um, sorry, I think our spreadsheet, I I wonder about looking at. The percentage of students who have been suspended only once and then maybe there's a sub-goal with academic, I just can't imagine all students, I don't know, I just wonder about. How is our system working for behavior supports for some of those kids, any interest?
Yes, if if it's okay with Sophie.
I and I can do a little digging and find out if it's even worth the goal, just as I hear about that and I've heard you guys talk about potentially that on goal.
Two.
We don't really have a sub-population, I think, right? I'll see how easy it is, if it makes sense.
Can you just speaking, Jesse was talking about going back, can I go back to two just to clarify? Um, do you want us to just keep the add, the chronic absenteeism under that and then that's the only goal as far as the measure goes? Do you want still the idea of school activities included in there or not?
Yeah.
I do, I think that's important to our connection.
I do.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I like that connection, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I do s- I do understand Ty's point on the numbers may not be totally easy to place as some of the other ones, but I think we just have to be. I think that is the measure.
At very least, we can work on trying to create that that data system metric to collect at very least.
Yeah, and 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 again, it might not be particip- I mean, you know, LEAP, it could be like a card club or in the library, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be.
Yeah, definitely. Exactly.
Like Josie was saying, you you, you know, you include kids, there's a sense of belonging, you're wanting and need to come to school, and so, yeah, I think LEAP could have a lot of opportunities. Um, to show growth.
Yeah, I struggle, I feel like I do have questions on the student suspensions, cause obviously we've seen. In uh when we look at the correlation to success of a student that.
Yeah, and it was a hard one because I was like, I we can't really measure counts of suspensions because like, eh, like that's super dependent, but I do like the idea that. The percentage of kids who have been suspended once and then it doesn't become a pattern, right, it it's almost like that's the idea of like. That student received an intervention, had some behavior support and then was able to rejoin the peers and move forward.
Sort of.
Right. I don't know, so, but I can look and see if we can do that, I like the idea of maybe looking at some pop on that one, some on that one.
Now other questions on three, we'll move to four, um. Yeah. Four questions on four?
Mm-hmm.
Got a few big highlighting numbers here, like graduation rates.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm I'm excited for these, I'm excited for this to the graduation, um, goals, targets, I I mean. I get the hundred per- percent is perfection, could be a waste, but um. I do know, I we have some administration at some of our high schools that have talked about a hundred percent. Uh, graduation rate, so if I I'd like to find a happy meeting with ninety five percent. Um, you know, of course, high graduation rates start in kindergarten and all these things come together. Um, so I I'd like to see a slightly higher graduation rate, I like that we're tying in again the equity for our kids furthest from opportunity, I'd like the same metric. Uh, for advanced coursework, uh, with AP and dual enrollment because we know there's a gap there. Um, so I I would like to see an equity measure built into that goal as well.
We want a sub-population potentially on that one too.
Right, because we know there's, like if you go on the state assessment, you can see that the gap between kids enrolled in AP and kids enrolled in dual enrollment.
I think the one thing we need to consider on our graduation rates is some of our students are not on the diploma track.
Mm-hmm.
So they do take longer to graduate and get a certificate of completion, so that would just be something we need to be cognizant of when we're thinking about those percentages.
Does that count as on-time graduation?
It does not, it does not.
It does not.
Oh, sort of completion.
So is ninety five percent reasonable or not?
It's high.
It's high.
But before we even do that, like just to back off, like the the hundred, I'm glad you have had that compromise of that of a hundred to ninety five, but. When I was thinking of, like, it is not in the best interests of every student to to graduate on time.
To be, that's correct.
That's correct.
Um, we have people who receive supports from the district who if they technically graduate, uh, which they are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Unable to do and uh if they theoretically somehow did, um. They would lose a lot of support and be in a really bad position, so like.
Mm-hmm.
Even if we could say let's graduate a hundred percent of our kids, I would say we're doing a disservice to a lot of people.
I I I have struggled since the beginning of when I worked at M D E. That we discount the alternative ed programs that graduate kids in five and six years. There are many kids that that for a lot of reasons end up, you know, and and when we, so I'll I'll just tell you that most districts around the state have cut. The kind of alternative ed program we have. T C highs do not exist much all over the entire state. They are, they are just one hundred percent virtual models and that's it. And I think that we have all those options and all that, honoring that we get kids fit five and six years out to graduate and we have that program. I I appreciate the goal, but I I also wanna honor that element too.
We go to five, six years and strike on-time graduation, can we get to a hundred percent?
No.
No, be just because it's what Tiffany talked about, our our MIKID program that we host, that the ISD doesn't, you know.
Our special ed kids.
Are are they are, you know, they're kids that generally end up with certificates of completion.
So if we go to six years, can we get to ninety five percent?
And I would say they have a right to an education until the age of twenty six.
Yeah.
The minute you give a student with a disability a diploma, um, they no longer would get any services, so if they needed, um. After-school programming, after they reach nineteen or twenty, they wouldn't be able to go on to our life skills center or our transition center, so that's.
So this this goal says on-time graduation rates, goal of ninety percent, that's then.
Yeah.
It's four years and and part of the reason why is because when a student doesn't hit the four year. We know and that's, we have a waiver at T C High, we actually can enroll kids two years after what they can be enrolled in or two third secondaries, they can go to twenty-two, we can. Um, can't have been twenty-two on some type of, but, um, we know then, okay. Who's out there, who didn't hit that on time and now what's our plan, who's chasing them, who's connecting to them, who's reaching, if they're not special.
Teams have one hundred percent graduation goals.
Do what?
Are building teams, schools, no not on their improvement plans, one hundred percent.
No, because those kids are housed in their buildings.
Essentials, essentials are really hard to get in the nineties, but, yeah.
Not a, not a center of its program, it's in our building. And we, and that's important because we want them to be our kids, you know.
As long as we think six percent over five years growth is is we're gonna.
I like where you're going with this, like, let's talk about what's realistic with a five-year goal, and I think five is probably the most realistic number because it's easier for us to measure, I don't wanna wait six years to see. But if you had that five-year goal and then maybe push it up a little bit, you guys can come back and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Think about that.
Throw it down.
Think about it, like, again, like, I just want to at least acknowledge that it's not in the best interest of him.
And early college can go against this too, it's.
Early college just go against it.
Student population that does early college, right, and dual enrollment.
It's decent, you know. And we've got thought of increasing, you know, especially if the state can come up with a funding model that works, but. Again, that is not on time because you really don't get your diploma until the fifth year when you get your associate's degree.
So, yeah, like, again, that's another making sure.
Yeah. But we'll take that back, give some thoughts and bring that thought back, yep, yep.
But I do like the Ty's point, also your point, I think, and increasing.
But just wanted to understand all those metrics and.
Well, I I understand them, I'm just wondering if it's bold enough, six percent over five years is my question.
Yep.
Like, I think that's lending to Tiffany's point of all that data, all of all of those different programs. And maybe that weeds out that nine percent then.
We'll look and see.
Okay.
Okay, others on four, personally, I would, just in the spirit of cutting off, not because I don't think it's important. I I saw less uh fundamental shift in value to the uh EDP and the plan for life, uh, the the last two, um.
Post-secondary, yeah, with EDP.
Yeah, yep, having an EDP and and. The hundred percent uh EDP and ninety-five have a plan and goal for life, I I thought there were less. Like gonna drive change within us, but if everyone else thinks otherwise, that's fine, and that was just in the spirit, I didn't dislike the goals, it was just in the spirit of trying to cut the number of goals.
Any thoughts on that, so if we were to take that one, it would be very big grossly, we're mandated to do it. Is there any real strong feeling to have to keep that as a goal? Or at strength of our.
All four of those goals.
Yeah, that's close, so, would it be be okay with that?
Those goals, please.
I mean.
Which one are you talking about?
Both of those goals.
I was, I I can be, this was in the spirit of the board, every board member said they want more focused goals, I feel like they're not that.
Yeah.
We have to do it anyway.
Mandated.
Hmm, but we are currently at eighty-eight percent compliance then, right, so there is room for improvement, or maybe, or is that?
Well.
There there are some.
Pre-mandate.
But there are some opt-outs, there are some different things that are there, I think, you know.
There's some that we didn't really think counted in there as we were looking at, yeah, not that one, so, yeah. I'm I'm fine, I that would narrow that down to, you know. Some nice metrics and we could do some, uh, you know, sub-population groups on those top two. Um, and then there's a little student, you know, perception there, I don't think it's bad, how many kids of ours say that they graduated with a full-time merit plan?
And you'll remember for those a part of our student, our bo- our boards superintendent advisory council, this is one they brought up.
Post-secondary?
The life plan.
Yeah, yep.
The the life plan.
For the life.
And and actually, I have a.
Just just post-secondary planning.
Mm-hmm. Is that a district template then, that second bullet here, the ninety-five percent one, that that is that based on a TCAPS template?
It's based on our student survey, we give one of the questions that we ask all of our high school students is, uh. Uh, I have future plans and or a goal for my life after high school.
And again, I'm okay to leave it and it's not like I disagree with having.
But you're just trying to narrow down.
I'm just trying to narrow it down. If I had to pick one to narrow down, that would probably be it, but I didn't dislike it in the first place.
Okay.
And actually, I would expand it, of course, you know, because I'd like to, and I've talked to John about this. If we had email, a current email address to do a graduation follow-up. You know, and basically, do you feel that you were adequately prepared and are you where you thought you would be?
I would love to do that, but I haven't found anybody that's been able to pull it off yet. Somehow, you know, the kids just they vacate and take that and we just don't get, they change them, go to college, that element, but. We've strategized with even some of our vendors, like if there's a way to be able to do that for transcript requests, like could parchment do that? We're exploring some things, you know, so like what if a kid it report, request their transcript, they maybe have to answer a few questions, but that's something we'd have to get the vendor to do. So, we got thoughts, but we're not there anywhere close to it to where I'd feel comfortable with it in the.
Cause I I'd like to have the kid.
Hundred percent agree.
Comment on whether or not twelve years.
We would love to have, did they did they graduate, you know, college, did they go right into the workforce, did they, you know, go on and, you know, lots of different things, we'd love to get some of that postgraduate da- data. Just nobody's figured that, unlocked that yet.
Questmates dot com.
The alumni.
Uh, yeah, with with generally fifty and sixty-year-olds who will do that more than twenty and thirty.
Um. Okay, so any comments on four or any other changes? Okay, moving on to five, um. Alright, so moving on to five, so one question I had is, do you allow, is there any? I think exit interviews are critical and obviously that, as you said, is people self-select for. Good and bad uh reasons, um, is there any ability to? Limit like, in the public world, which I'm not saying this is right or wrong, I'm just saying in the public world. Oftentimes, if you don't complete your exit interview, you're not eligible to get a referral, positive one, I think. Like, anything like that, that's extreme, but like, it's a.
We have, I mean, there's some components where we have some mandated things that we have to give to an employer.
Like you can't withhold the final paycheck, you can't, and usually by then, I mean, they've already received their referral bonuses, they've long since been paid out, they've been paid out longevity bonuses.
No, no, you know, exactly.
They've been paid out, you know, um, sign-on bonuses, those are all, so we don't really have any incentives when people leave that they get. You know what I mean, um, and.
Usually that is a recommendation of public.
And 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 their records are public and be FOIA'd as well for that, I just don't see how that, I mean, if you go, yeah, and they go, okay, well, just FOI my stuff and send it.
Yeah.
I was throwing one out, I didn't. I didn't think this one would work, I was just saying, and and you can actually, this, the test that we do, there's a varied ways. Cause in the in the private sector, like exit interviews are pretty.
Other than employment verification, I I can, I don't think we can get a lot of of actual referrals for the next job.
No. Did, like, I mean, and I made the distinction between.
It's recommendation, like, I see it always recommend typ- typically.
Like you said, I don't, we don't get much of that.
The majority of our teaching staff, you know, our instructional staff, which make up the largest share of our, you know, staffing population, they. You know, most of them leave for retirement purposes, so they're not leaving for other opportunities, they're leaving because they've just put in their time and they're saying, I'm out, you know, so there's not a lot. So they don't feel the need to complete those, um, and resignation, so often what we see again in in the teaching world is. People resign because they are leaving to move away from Traverse City, like a s- spouse has moved or they're deciding to no longer live here, so.
So, yes.
It's not like they're going to one of our, we rarely lose people to a surrounding district, we do lose them to Northwest Ed, um, in the specialized world, unfortunately. Um, because there's so few of them, the the market for them is highly competitive and so we tend to lose out on that and so much of it is contractual. So negotiated, so we can't negotiate even with our support units groups, we can't negotiate with individuals to get them to stay. So we, you have the pay structure, the benefit structure, all of that, we do like in meet confers and union negotiations and what it said, set to it'd be an unfair labor practice for me to reach out and say. How about if I paid you, give you two more steps on the salary schedule if you don't leave, we're not able to do that. So, I mean, there are some challenges, we do reach out and ask, you know, individuals that to give them the opportunity to meet with us in person for an exit interview and if they didn't wanna do that, then they can always do the online option and still. The utilization is really, really small, so, you know, we're gonna seek ways to try to improve that participation. Um, and more actively utilize the data that we're collecting from that to see if we're seeing any sort of trends. Right now, we're sharing it with the member of cabinet who oversees that department when we get those, um, good and bad. But right now, we're like, we need to start tracking trends in different departments, what's the key reason people are leaving?
Um, and I'm good, I didn't have any. That's okay, um. And any questions on number five, I think obviously the first one needs some sort of baseline or measurable, they're a little bit more.
Yeah, we and we have not collected that data previously in our perception surveys, um, so it's one of the things that we're gonna roll out right after the first of the year.
You're talking about the ca- candidate experience feedback, the first bullet?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Manager satisfaction.
How, yeah, I was curious, how often do you plan to do that new hire check-in, just once or like?
During, for, we check in with them, um, multiple times during the year.
Okay, it's just in that's that survey, that formal.
Yes, yeah, we're not necessarily getting those answers, we we reach out to them in person. And sometimes they share and sometimes they don't, so we're trying to develop surveys so that people might feel more comfortable answering a survey than they. And sometimes they share and sometimes they don't, so we're trying to develop surveys so that people might feel more comfortable answering a survey than they would when they're meeting with us or we're calling. Or stopping by their classrooms just to see how things are going.
I don't have any questions, but not to sound like a broken record, but and I understand why this goal is in here, um, but uh I would recommend, there's twelve measures of success. If it's possible to get these down to one or two, um, much like we moved Christine's work with finance and facilities to values, I think there's a way to, you know, this important work. That's basically Connie's and her team's job that often is mandated, that I don't necessarily think we need uh strategic plan goals for Connie's uh job description. So that's um, that again, not that it doesn't matter, but like, we haven't even looked at our revised values, but I think there's a way to incorporate HR and legal into our values.
Well, I'm I'm gonna make a comment, I've made this before, I I think this goal is as important as the performance goals. Because there's two people in my classroom, there's a student and there's a teacher, and we need to figure out some way, I know nobody likes the word merit in here, so I'll quit talking about it. But we need some way to incentivize good performance and this goal is maybe one way to do it. I don't know how we knew that, I don't know how Connie does that, given the union negotiations, but. We're gonna ask teachers to stretch, we need to incentivize those who made it. And that's why I think this is as important as performance goals.
Yeah. There used to be, um, in the lost twelve fifty of the rise school code, that uh we had to have some element of merit as as part of pay. So most districts looked at it and said for a long time, oh, a hundred dollars at it, because, I mean, they didn't have the dollars to do a substantial merit increase. And then they were finding that they weren't enforcing it at all, most districts didn't have anything along those lines, so most districts vacated the idea. And for once, I think the legislature put, they they heard what we were saying and they eliminated that requirement from section twelve fifty of the school code. Not saying that, but now it would be a negotiated item. And the for the changes in the evaluation system, we we eliminated the highly effective, the changes to twelve forty-eight of the school code this year. They eliminated the highly effective, so the majority, the vast majority, if not ninety-eight percent of our teachers are gonna score in that effective range. So it's hard to distinguish good from great anymore, given the changes to the evaluation system. And that was mandated by statute.
This year. I agree with Scott, this goal is really important, um, because if we can't retain our staff, we're not gonna succeed. And that's a business's biggest, you know, expense is having to retrain people, rehire, I mean, if we could bring, you know, the the support staff turnover, employee turnover rate down. Cut it in half, that would be even better, I'm gonna defer to you on that, um, for that retention goal. But, um, I was gonna say for grow and develop, I I'm a big believer in professional development. And we had a good learning series at curriculum a couple of months ago with our union reps. Who, you know, have partnered with Dan and Jesse to think through what they, what the teachers and other staff really need this next year. But I still wonder if we need more specialized training opportunities for subject matter experts and teacher leaders and administrators and support staff. So under that grow and develop focus area, just trying to add something about identifying those opportunities. Um, at least as a strategy and activity, I'll leave it to you if you wanna have a measure of success target, but at least acknowledging that opportunity. Um, and you know, if again, that if that's something that y'all need to come back to the board and ask for the resources, cause there are budget implications, so be it. But I I just really wanna develop and grow our staff.
I I'll just comment, it's not um reflected here, but it is our practice, so we have those teacher leaders or folks who wanna go back for the tuition reimbursement. And some of the critical shortage areas, um, they can go to their supervisor, who will look and and evaluate the training. And is their value added for the district as well, for those persons to attend, and they do have a professional development budget, that they can send folks to additional training on top of, for those specialized. And I'll also make just kind of a comment for the board's knowledge, we're really trying to build a lot of that professional development into our early release days and those, so that. You know, people have lives too, so as much as we want our folks to be trained as much as possible, when their only opportunities are outside of the workday, sometimes family circumstances are not conducive. Even for people who really want to participate, just their stage in life prevents that, so with the virtual opportunities and then trying to build it into the workday.
Say that Misty and I are uh doing some trainings with the TC CAPS of folks on how to de-escalate. Uh, I'm working with the special ed assistants, we've started some PD there, so I do think there is some things that are written under goal number three. Um, that address those PD elements or PL uh elements for some of our non-certified staff.
And we have asked those groups to survey their membership on what are some of the things that we can provide, you know, because they can, for early release day, our TC CAPS, that's a budgeted workday for them. So can we make that more meaningful based on some of the trainings that they wanna see?
And can I just add on the support side, because I have quite a few of them, on specifically the transportation side, a lot of it is related to behavior.
Yeah.
But also don't forget that some of that retention is is led by us. So I wouldn't want to be, have a target of less retention when some of it is us helping people find better positions that need their their um skill set.
Next week. Um, and I, I do think U I turnover is important, but to that point, yeah, sometimes it is needed, um. I do think there's too many goals and I I would like to get back to like the, what are we keyly, what are we trying to measure here? And it is obviously probably staff engagement, um, staff support, um.
Do you, do you need the recruitment portion? Because you're gonna do that regardless, right?
I mean, overall.
Well, we're gonna do all of this regardless, but it just, we.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, but there's certain parts, like we've improved the, even for all, like, we've improved the recruitment process with the videos.
Yes, yeah.
Like, so the speed and the ability to respond, like, is is a very big.
Spark hires.
Yeah, spark, I think.
Yeah, so that was part, yeah, obviously, this was a goal that's carried over. So spark hires were one of the initiatives that we implemented since the last strategic plan, and it has really streamlined the hiring process, because people look one way on paper. And then we pull them, a lot of them from out of downstate or what have you, up for an interview only to discover that had we known a little bit more about the candidate, we may not have wasted their time or the time of the hiring manager. So this helps us really get down to the people we we really wanna invest our time in to meet.
Yeah, so I think, I do think that that probably need to be narrowed a little bit of of, and more tied to like what are we trying to achieve. Yeah, but like, again, what I, I'd love the board feedback on this one, but again, are they supported? Are they taken in?
And and I'm more than happy to go back and narrow these down, one of the reasons there's so many touchpoints is, you're talking about different things are effective for different employee groups. And and changing or modifying one of the areas, will that really move the needle sufficiently, you know what I mean? A lot for us, a lot of us throwing all that we can at the retention, you know, the recruitment, the retention and the training. Um, but I'm happy to try to narrow those down and maybe put them all in, few of them under one umbrella.
I don't dislike any of them, I'm just trying to figure out how to.
Oh, no, I I totally get it.
How to get.
Mm-hmm. And whether it's something we're working on or something we're already doing consistently.
Yeah, is it gonna move the needle? At this point.
Well, and I think even hearing Connie talk about the support groups, not necessarily the teachers, but the support groups and why are we losing them to other positions and then to look at, you know, and and like you said. Um, you know, that, just identifying that and, um, yeah. And I I also wrote down exit interviews with all those support groups and how do we understand the big picture, like, do they have retirement, do they have the other things at other jobs? Are they just hourly and they're making more money elsewhere, you know, just those kind of things, I think would help, you know, with. Changes to our retirement system have not helped us, because we always just be able to say, we have a pension program, which was unheard of. Yeah, right. And now with the options that are available, they're portable, so people can take them, they're not, you know, they don't have to wait ten years to vest, they can take their with them. Yes, right. Which is, which is a, which is a challenge, and the market just is super competitive. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I think about technology people, where they could go and how much money they could make and, you know, flexible schedules, work from home, you know, all those options. Which is just not unfortunately an option for us, bec- based on our needs, but they they have lots of options out there. But that doesn't mean we stop trying to keep them, that's right.
We have awesome kids.
We do.
That's right.
That matters, that matters.
Hi, everyone.
Yeah, super dinnies we all love.
Well, we're glad for it.
And I would, I would still put our benefits up against anybody's, our benefits are really good.
Good. Yep.
One hundred percent.
Um, okay, any other questions on five, any comments, questions on five? Alright, any comments or questions overall? So we'll come back and.
So the thought to come back at the regular board meeting?
I I was gonna say that, I was doing for that.
That, I don't know, that's a question.
That would be ideal for timing, but I I know, I don't know how much work we just created or if we simplify it, it's not, um.
August twenty-fifth.
Doable, not.
Six o'clock or five o'clock?
About this, we say so, but if I run into where we're like, in the element.
Yes. Yeah.
May have to have the board.
So we'd like to do it, but it may doesn't.
Unless Scott knows, we'll have to rethink it if so, but we'll give it our best shot right now, we'll get banned tomorrow, see where we're at.
Alright. And uh we, the agenda has been posted, I don't know if we had a discussion item on it, are we good as board?
We did not, so it would have to be modified at that point.
I modified that. We could, or we, I believe we could probably modify it at this point, with board approve, with, I don't think I need a vote, but at least permission, right?
You could. There's no, there's no real protocol.
No, there isn't any protocols.
You know, it's really a, it's the discretion really of the board president, really in that element, but.
That's why I feel like I've got everyone here, has anyone, does anyone object to me adding that to the agenda for this transition?
No. No.
Okay.
I think we're rushing it with August twenty-fifth.
But if.
I think we need staff back, so these guys can query staff about some of the things we're asking for.
But it could be as simple as, look, we've worked on these items, let's clarify these, we don't have the rest of it, so I feel like there's some work to be done on that.
So not necessarily adoption.
It doesn't mean that we're adopting.
Right.
Just kind of a round two of. Mm-hmm. Where we're at, yeah.
We gotta clarify anything if there's nothing to clarify.
Yeah.
I'm wondering.
How does that feel to you guys?
I think that the goal areas and the metrics, I feel like I can come back to you guys by the twenty-fifth and say, we have a method to pull these that we can do regularly, right? And here's what we set based on your feedback and conversation today, the strategies and activities, and I don't know if I ever want those like stationary.
And we did it last time, you might remember, I always kept saying it's a living document, so there's options, there are opportunities, where, let's see where our budget comes in funding wise, there might be a categorical that addresses one of them, who knows?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, you know, we're always like, like, if, do you give me an example where that happened in our last one, the Teach for America opportunity came in, right? So that's something that we just boom, put in as a a resource and a and a strategy that was there, so I would kinda hope the board would give us that caribou ability to handle those.
And I don't, and to be honest, I don't even need to see that, the strategies, the how I leave staff, so I don't, it doesn't bother me, I think, making sure we're clear about what we're expecting and that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. And the outcomes over the next in twenty thirty is more our purview.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't expect a vote on it at the twenty-fifth meeting, regardless personally, cause I feel like we should need to review it there.
At what point do we give them the opportunity though, to say, if we're going to accomplish this, we need additional resources and they are X? That's, I mean, all of this is in a vacuum right now until we're.
Well, then we talk, talk first.
Last October one at twelve.
Yeah. And well, it depends if the legislature moves the clock backwards in that way, or if they, you know, do it and pull the drop bridges up at one AM, but I.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm not saying we have the resources, I'm saying you're gonna have to tell us what you need in order to accomplish the goals we do.
But I think that's gonna come.
We don't know what we have.
That's gonna come, that's an every year discussion.
I have no idea. There's going to be a conversation on budget at, anyway, when we see where things are at, that we're gonna need to have. So I would say, you know, as soon as we can, I mean, February is when we generally do a budget amendment, right Christine? I'd say probably, you know, with that, but it could be sooner with some things such as at risk, you know, we just have no idea where some of those are gonna land.
No, and again, we we don't have to, I think we we're adding it to the agenda, we can see how it goes. We definitely have something to review and then we'll get as far as we can and then see where we stand.
But if we could also have the new version released farther in advance of the meeting and not on a weekend where your website's down, that would be great.
Yeah, that would.
I would want to.
So, I mean, that might be a reason why two weeks from now is just too soon. I don't wanna put any additional pressure on anybody.
If it is, if. If it is, then we can.
And school is starting right around the corner.
Yeah.
Let me get with the team and I'll let the board know kinda where the consensus feels, and if, we'll be honest, and if it is, we'll just, the board will know and that's where we go.
Cause there is a lot coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not pushing it, like if 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 we need to push it back, will we push it back, if we, if there's a couple of clarifying questions, then we can clarify that.
Yeah.
So, okay, um, moving on from the study session, uh, we did add uh seven, which is funding allocation specifically to splits, um. There is an email out to finance director.
So I've updated the board, but you know, where we were a couple of weeks ago, we really are not very different, um, from that aspect where we are, we've had a few more. But per the formula, we're right on, you know, where we we thought we would be. Um, but, you know, I, we've always had conversations late and the boards wanted to be very cognizant to not have those. You know, to not get in a situation where this is being brought to the board just before back to school. I think Dan brought a lot of insight as, you know, um, as of late of 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 when his work at Westwoods, as well as Jesse, just of trying to come up with more of a hard line. And essentially, we're within a week pretty much of that date, unless something really strange happens, fourteen kids walk into Central Elementary, you know. Like, but for the most part, we think we we wanna put in a pen that's a little bit erasable, but not really staffing for this point. So, you know, from a a financial standpoint, um, you all, you know, know we've had conversations of of, we don't exactly know our budget. So it's a little bit of roll the dice, if the board wanted to do some more with staffing at this point. Um, you know, we know that we had our auditors in last week and gave you some numbers on that of where we were from last year. Um, that I think, you know, turned out more positive, but remember, there is still a million carryover that's sitting with some of our secondary buildings. So potential things that they could use for in the next year. But I guess my question is just, what's your level of want if, of doing something at this point? I've asked Dan to kinda put some thoughts together if you did want more staffing, cause I think there was some conversation amongst the board to Scott, uh, with that. Um, I I just kinda want some direction at this point, if you wanna hear from Dan kinda where he thinks that that lands with that, if the board wanted to do something. Or if the board's comfortable at a status quo, you know, I kinda wanna bring some clarity a little bit to our conversations about splits. That, um, you know, there's there, we, I could point to great data of teachers that have splits and do great work with it. I can point to some teachers that, and and Sarah can give input in this too, that just do not like teaching them. Um, you know, it it is an element of numbers and trying to be financially, fiscally responsible, um, when you do it versus multiple smaller classes. Um, you know, we traditionally, a part of our process, we've um allocated one additional FTE at Blair and one additional at Traverse Heights. Um, that, you know, we we just, we've done as far as a practice from an, trying to meet that equity standpoint within those buildings. But they also still are kinda in this mix with splits as well at both of those buildings. Um, so just wanna put it all out there and see, do you wanna hear Dan's thoughts on where that kinda is, where where do you wanna go with it? So, this is just the last opportunity, teacher candidates are few, you know, we we did do some interviews today, we've got some more. Cause we think we might have a couple of openings from some possible shifts in staffing that could happen still, um, need. So we just wanted to have to know what's left there from that standpoint, um, so I just kinda wanna open up to that.
I mean, I would love to hear, I would love to hear the numbers, I mean, you're you're exactly right, um, some teachers can do great with splits, others don't. Um, but I also think there's grades in there too, that can be splits, that can be more challenging to others. Um, and so, um, you know, just having gone through our strategic plan, I I know it's not right now here today, but of course, achievement, and so I I would like to.
Yeah.
Before he provides that, can I just make one, we did a couple of things for, via letter of agreement last year, so we could start the school year to help with support, supporting splits. Um, in the past, we've given an opportunity for an aid or compensation for teachers who do overload, that did not extend to teachers who taught splits. But recognizing that, you know, overloads and splits are difficult, one could argue one more than the other, but, you know, I'm not a teacher, I I don't know how to say that. But so we are going to be offering the same um choice of compensation or an aid. Um, that will be at the discretion of the administrator with, in consultation with the teachers for anyone who is teaching a split. So having that extra set of hands in the classroom or additional compensation to recognize the additional work. And he referenced it, but you know, we have, um, we had five interviews today, we have a few more. And he referenced it, but you know, we have, um, we had five interviews today, we have a few more on Friday. We are running out of certified and qualified teaching staff, um, and some of the ones we interviewed today that would not move forward, you know, with the principals, so just whatever decisions you make, know that we'll continue to work to try to fill, but it it it's going to be a challenge.
And I think universally, we will agree that we should not hire people who aren't going to do a good job, so.
We, and I'm just gonna be honest, we made some very last minute, right before Labor Day hires a few years right when I got here, and none of those individuals were still with the organization. They were let go during the probationary period.
Yep.
Still wanna hear from Dan.
Good morning.
Yeah. Dan, can you?
Now I give it to Dan.
I thought that would've done it.
Okay, so currently, um, nine splits are in the, are slated for the district. Um, of those nine, two of those were made by schools, uh, Blair and Cortade specifically for classroom composition. So sometimes you can get rid of a split by creating an overload that's manageable. They could do that at those schools, but because they're smaller schools, right, they're under two hundred kids, uh, they only have one section of second grade like Cortade does, so Cortade, you know, talking to Andy, wants to do a one-two split, um, knowing that it gives them another option for a section, and then if we have behavioral concerns, we have, there's an option, and which is, it's happened there before that we've been stuck with um, separation agreements or things like that, and we can't keep the kids apart 'cause they're in the same room.
So, right now we're looking specifically, so I would narrow that down to seven that we're specifically looking at.
So as I went through, Dr. Van Wagner mentioned that part of the mission-based budget process, where we go through formulas, we take a one-five number, this is for one-five only, we don't split K one, uh, and we take that, divide by twenty seven point eight, that gives us a number, so let's say it comes out to ten point two teachers, we always round that up, so then they automatically get eleven teachers for instance, so that's the first one that helps compensate a little bit that gets us, that we're making sure that we're under that twenty seven point eight, 'cause everybody gets rounded up. So in addition to that, the first step after that is that Blair and Heights do get an additional FTE to further take care of any splits and to get our classroom numbers lower. So since then, we looked at mission-based budget, in certain schools, Cortade, Silver Lake, Long Lake, um, also got an additional FTE like Blair and Traverse Heights did, because they had so many splits um, that it doesn't make any sense, 'cause one once you split one class, if if you've ever looked at the mission-based budget and some of you sat on it, it creates a waterfall effect where then you're splitting one, two, two, three, three, four, four, five, and you have five of them. So as far as equity, looking at splits, um, there are other schools that got an additional FTE above formula. Okay, so looking, so then I thought, well, if we're looking at equity and if we're to prioritize, I started with title schools that haven't received any quote-unquote extra FTE. So I'd start with central grade, central grade right now is just operating within normal formula of the twenty seven point eight and rounded up. They are the school that have the most, um, free and reduced kids, uh, they're not the highest percentage. Some of that might be because they house, you know, a hundred tag students, uh, but right now they have more, I believe these numbers are from last year. So central grade sits at two hundred and fifty two, two hundred and fifty two free and reduced, our next closest number to that, uh, Traverse Heights at two sixteen. So if I were to prioritize a split or alleviating one, that would be, I think, top of my list. So next one with that, title school, Cherry Knoll, Cherry Knoll, the partial title school, they haven't received any additional FTE uh outside of uh formula. So, as far as me putting any type of priority, I would start with those two. After that, the next five, uh, would be, I think, at discretion as far as if if the board actually wants to dictate who gets a split or who doesn't, or if it's a dollar amount that we continue to look at numbers and find best fit. Also incorporating, um, Erica, what you said about grade level, right, that two-three split can be a challenge. Specifically, I know that see, I think any split when incorporating a new curriculum is a challenge, but even more than that is the mathematics. Uh, with math and a two-three, there's no way on like a three-four or four-five, you can combine those classes and and still be able to teach the concepts. For a two-three, you have to do two separate math lessons. So obviously this, the three-hour split support helps with that this year, those, there's a split support that's not FTE, that's an aid. They can't deliver that instruction, but they can definitely monitor another grade level while the other grade level gets the instruction.
What, can you identify which ones would be a two-three split?
Yeah, so current two-threes that we have, uh, so Long Lake has a two-three, but they're gonna leave, so it's, don't write that one down, 'cause they're allevi, they're trying to alleviate that with a, with an overload at second grade, Silver Lake does have a two-three. Eastern does have a two-three, Blair has a two-three. And then Westwoods and Willow Hill are, right now I've alleviated that two-three with an overload, but Westwoods has two third grades at thirty-two as overload, so they're literally, and they prefer that, right, I worked with Toby, we talked to teachers, classroom composition, every school's a little unique, every classroom's unique. Uh, I think you're getting to a tipping point there, we're like literally, like I check sixty-four third graders every day at Westwoods, right? Looking at that number, 'cause I think like sixty-five, and you're like, but then if we hit sixty-five, right, we create a split. So that's why it's kind of a, as far as looking at priorities aboard, I would lean more, I could give some input towards the dollar amount that we that we allocate rather than saying this one, this one, and this one. Um, so I went with after those two, the next five, um, you're looking at, like I said, there's a split at Blair, there's two splits at Traverse Heights, um, there's a split at Silver Lake, a split at Eastern. So, I think discussion with board as I thought about this over the last couple of weeks is, you know, you look at free and reduced numbers, uh, you look at buildings that maybe have not gotten any additional FTE versus a have, and when do you add to buildings? You know, do you add, do you get rid of both height splits and now you're three FTE over at about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? Before you add anything to Eastern? Uh, so those are, you know, thoughts that I've had about how the board wants to move forward about alleviating splits.
I mean, isn't it a little bit irrelevant, 'cause even if we told you right now we wanted to eliminate all the splits, we.
We can't.
Gone.
Alleviate, right right now to get rid of seven splits, I mean, this is such a round number, it's like around eight hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But even if we had the money, we don't have to necessarily in the staffing.
What's likely, no?
We have to prioritize, I think, you know, there were a a couple candidates today that they, that the principals felt comfortable with moving forward with, and we'll see what happens on Friday. And we have a open elementary posting that we're constantly monitoring, um, applicants, but we're not getting certified teachers.
So realistically, we have two to three maybe options.
Potentially, I think two for certain, and we'll see how far it goes, I'd love to think that all three of them would be great, but um, most of them coming in with no experience at all, so we'd have to assess that.
Yeah, I I know Connie spoke to this about the, but as an elementary principal, which I was for a few years, and i- if you have the wrong person in that classroom, those kids have that person all day, all year. Um, it's just such a huge impact, and it's a really hard thing for those kids, um, that I hear. So I I would really say prioritizing this and then being honest about our candidate pool is really the best way. To deal with this.
And I appreciate you sharing all the numbers and the logic behind how you're making those decisions, I think, you know, 'cause we get, we'll get a lot of emails as we go, get into the start of the school year and how, when that all rolls out, um, and so, yeah, I mean, my opinion would be, yeah, just we trust your decision-making process and if there is money and the decision's made to not have a split, I think.
I think we have to say that there is money, that's our.
Well, I can't say that, that's why I'm bringing it to you, like, we don't have a budget, you know, it it very well could be a fun equity spend, I I don't know, like.
Yeah.
It's like that, the last three years.
You know, and like there's another, well, we've at least kinda knew that, you know, we had our budget, that we knew what the revenue was for the most part, now we're even another step down, but you know, so that's, that's where I couldn't do anything without board, I mean, you you know, that that, it's a roll of the dice, the budget could come back great and you're there in different ways, or it could be, you know, different categorical that somehow could work, you know, but I have no idea. It it's a blindfold guess right now, and that's where you guys come in.
So my, my assumptions are, yeah, Dan, crossing fingers that we will be at least roughly okay with the budget, is my hope. I think we talked, I was really uncomfortable with the dollar amount that we approved last year and the fund balance going down that much, but
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, I thought it was the best thing to do, thankfully through, um, other positives that we didn't end up needing that money, so
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay to do that again, knowing that it was the right thing then and it's probably the right thing now.
Mm-hmm.
And if you needed a dollar amount, 'cause we don't know many things.
Very clear.
Right, so on our original budget, we adopted a two million dollar deficit, so it, I, we have permission for that. Depending on how the funding comes in and the priority list, I think what I'm hearing you say is there's permission to abide by the budget we already adopted and make the decisions that are needed. So I I don't think it is like a formal vote, if there's a general comfortability with the the thought process. We adopted a budget with a shortfall 'cause we have no idea, um, especially with the volatility at the federal level, but as long as when we get our budget, it's not worse than that, I feel like we do have the discretion to make those decisions.
We do, I think, yeah, I think, and that's definitely.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we're okay with that.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously you are gonna be in the position where you're gonna have to make this decision this week and come back to us in a month and say, well, now we're, which you may have to anyway, because we have, it won't be even a month, it'll probably be a month and a half.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any input on Dan's rationale?
I like Cherry Knoll and Central Grade.
First?
Yeah, those two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's helpful, that's helpful, that's what we're trying to, you know.
And I, and the two-grade, and the two-three split.
Yeah, it tends to be, especially if we're about to approve goals around equity.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I believe we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for sure, Central Grade and Cherry Knoll, that makes a ton of sense, and and then looking at that two-three and, you know, where that could impact, um, I think is probably pretty crucial for the teachers, I mean, right, having to teach two math curriculums.
I just don't know we're gonna get that far, but.
Yeah. And a new language arts curriculum.
What's that?
And a new language arts curriculum, for many of them.
Right, 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 right.
So that may be something to look at.
And that's why I, I don't think we're gonna get that far down the line.
Who's piloting versus who has not.
Mm-hmm.
One of the splits is assigned to a teacher that was piloting the curricula. I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
Curriculum-wise.
Right.
And this is great, time is of the essence, we had two vetted candidates ready to, in the hopper, ready to go, and we reached out to them and they've gotten other jobs. I mean, they, it's like they go like that, you know.
Okay, I appreciate that thought, that helps, and uh, go through process this week and like, you know, kinda what I'm. But we're ready to kinda lock in here by end of the week, and like I said, strange things could happen, you know, three, three related families move in and twelve kids, you know, like, okay, you know, but.
Pretty much a lot of building being finished right now, a lot of people moved in.
Yeah, or, but you also can have the inverse happen, so, you know, we'll we'll see.
Yeah.
We know, we know.
The ominous that you say that and then the. The, uh, okay, so any other questions? Moving on, public comment number two. Okay, um, I I read you the, uh, again, the board has set aside this time for public comment and you should have three minutes uh to speak and do not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and disruptive feedback. Detail rules and procedures including a plain process outlined in Board Policy two five zero four. Thanks.
Thank you very much, my name is Mike Bradkey, Terry.
Yeah, yes.
Nice to meet you. Uh, I've been here before, professional, professional, professional. So, um, first of all, you guys are doing some incredible work, okay, this is not an easy job. Um, you do have a number of things that are in place, um, having been put in place over the past couple of years, and those things should generate results here, this coming year, as you move to a full implementation. So, um, one percent increase per year, I believe, is within the margin of error. That means if you get one percent, you won't know whether what you did was what made a difference, nor that it actually is a true one percent, okay? So I think you could set much more ambitious goals, okay, and empower your staff to make a difference, okay? Uh, three percent per year is reasonable for overall, and probably twice that for economically disadvantaged. Those two populations are subsets of each other, so they're both gonna go up if either one of them goes up, okay? The the strategic plan is always the work of the administration, okay? I I kinda went through all of the, um, things you're gonna implement and just said admin, uh, staff, um, specialists, and I I would say probably three quarters of it is about admin. But you do have to get staff by you, okay? Because if it doesn't happen at the s- at the teacher's level in the classroom, it doesn't happen at the principal level in controlling culture in the building, if it doesn't happen with parent engagement, it's gonna be hard to do anything differently, okay? So, um, you know, I think setting, uh, ambitious goals is motivating to people. You're saying to them, I believe in you, okay? Uh, I believe in the parents, I believe in the students, I believe in my teachers, okay? Um, remember, those numbers, one percent translates into kids. There's a Michael there, there's a Sarah, there's somebody that's moving to reading and math competency. And so, um, empower your teachers, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the board president, President Martin, just a reminder, the MASB conference in October is in Traverse City. We have an unusually large amount of legal changes and, uh, OMA follow-ups and things changing that we should be aware of, so it's a convenient that it's in our backyard and hopefully we can, I know it's October. Um, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
I second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those close say nay. Meeting adjourned.